We're going to call this meeting to order. This is our first council workshop for 2019, and I want to welcome everyone. We've had a big weekend behind us, and government's back working again, so we're here tonight doing our job at the borough level. We have a few changes here. West Heiser, Councilmember Heiser, usually sits over here. He is at the end there where our Borough Manager usually sits. He's going to be working our equipment tonight, keeping us on target. Councilmember John Lawver will not be here tonight. He couldn't attend tonight. But with us, we do have Community Media. We have Mark Worley here, and this will be our first filming of our workshops, which starts tonight with this meeting. So, thank you, Mark, and thank you, Community Media, for being here. I have an announcement, a couple announcements. We're going to be holding a public hearing on February the 11th. It will be at 6:30. It will be immediately before our regular council business meeting for February. Again, that's February 11th. And that will be to take public comment regarding the draft joint comprehensive plan that the county's been working on with the Borough, Strabane Township, and Cumberland Township. They are ready to release that draft after a couple years, I believe it's been that they've been working on that. So, that is currently available at the county's website. We have a copy here at the Borough that you are welcome to come in and see. And I imagine we will post a link. Charles, can we post a link? Charles, are we still connected with him?
No.
Okay. Yeah, our manager, Charles Gabel, has Skyped in, but we haven't been able to get the video.
Sure. Sounds like he's on.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he's back.
I'm back.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was asking if we would be publishing a link to the joint com- the draft joint comprehensive plan on our Borough website. Can we do that? Charles?
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, this is a question for you. Can we post a link to the county's joint comprehensive plan on our website?
Yes.
Okay. So, there will be a link there, or you can go into the county website, the planning office, and look at it there. Another announcement. An executive session of the Borough Council will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this work session, consistent with Section 708A 3 and Section 708A 4 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to receive information relative to the possible purchase or lease of real property by the Borough; and two, to consult with its professional advisers regarding information and strategy in connection with issues on which identifiable claims or complaints are expected to be filed. Okay, and that's all the announcements I have. Did you have anything, Manager Gabel, that I missed?
No.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move to public comment. Again, there's a sign-up sheet at the lectern. If you haven't signed in, please do so and provide that information. We're going to comment, we'll accept public comment, on the new business and the old business items that you see on the agenda. There are agendas up there, I believe. And we ask that you limit your comments to those items for this comment period. We will have another comment period at the end of the meeting where we will take comments on other issues as well as these. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, and so we'll start that. Who would like to start public comment? Mike?
Good evening. Mike Chestoff, 264 Baltimore Street here in the Borough. I want you to know I'm here a great personal sacrifice, because as we speak, Duke and Notre Dame are playing in men's basketball. I'm basically here tonight, you know, to ask for facts, not fiction, generous helpings of common sense and teamwork. I've talked about the letter "T" for 2018 and 2017 amongst the council and the citizens, and you've done pretty well at that. But it's got to be amongst the staff, Borough Council, and I'm glad that, you know, some of yous are coming back or are going to run in the primary. There's been a lot of discussion, both here and in the media and amongst many of the people here, on what we call bagged or temporary parking meters. That's Chapter 15, which I think is on the agenda. I'm confused. I'm looking for that consistency. Majestic Theater has no meters. St. Francis bags theirs for funerals, but on Sundays, and that's where I go to church, they put a cap over that, you know, for drop-off and that. So, I'm looking for some consistency when you do this thing, you know, common sense enforcement. This issue, in fact, requires or demands, I think, a town hall. It's not going to be solved in one or two meetings, and there's got to be transparency on what the hell is going on. If necessary, I'd ask you to, you know, you used to have committee groups, you know, just get a small group of, you know, citizens and the lawyer and the staff and a member or two from council, and chew on this cabbage awhile, and you'll figure it out. I want you to settle it peacefully, too. I don't want my tax dollars paying for right-to-know requests by citizens. You went through that before, and we certainly don't need to go to litigation. Certainly don't need to go to litigation, and I'll tell you what, I personally smell that train coming, and I'm not happy about it. You know, like I said before, I want to thank the two members that are running for council and the one that's thinking about it. You've got a good team. You're very key to the success of Gettysburg, and I know there's a lot of work that goes into your thought process. It's a lot more than sitting here. It's the before, during, and after, and the tough executive sessions. And lastly, I hope we're not showing the ready-site developer that's supposed to make his decision in February, the improper face of Gettysburg that were not friendly to business. I know, Robin Fitzpatrick, that was a long process, so do what you need to do, but common sense and transparency, thank you.
Okay, other comments? Yes. Peggy?
So, we know that residents are concerned that there is-
Peggy, can you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Peggy Rock, 69 East Broadway, Gettysburg. And I'm the manager of Gallery 30. I've heard over and over, of course, that residents are concerned that the real estate taxes are going to rise because of the reserved parking spaces. It seems to be a focus on the ones in front of the upper crust. But here are some other considerations. The upper crust is going to create 30 to 50 full-time jobs, and all of those people are going to be paying to park here in the Borough. The upper crust will seat up to 500 customers. Where are they going to park? Maybe the parking garage will finally be fully utilized. And as an example, the upper crust has a local customer who already wants a reservation for a party of 300 people. So, assuming only 150 people of those people drive to the restaurant, where are they going to park? They're going to park at the Borough parking meters, and they're going to park in Borough parking lot. There's absolutely no question that the parking revenue generated by the upper crust will far exceed any lost income from these three spaces, because, remember, these spaces aren't free either. Not only will the restaurant be generating a huge increase in parking meter and parking garage revenue for the Borough, it will also be paying for these reserved spaces. And right at the moment, it's $150 per month per space. So, and I've also heard concern that everyone would want a space, but of course, that's not true. If that was true, everyone would have been applying for them since 1985. Not everyone needs one, and not everyone would want to pay for one. And even if they did, the revision, the proposed revision, the way it's written now, doesn't allow for it. It only allows for hotels and B&amp;Bs. I've also heard the concern that it's not fair to other businesses, especially the small ones, if they can't have reserved spaces. This argument completely ignores the impact of large hospitality businesses on foot and vehicle traffic in a small town, and the Borough can't simply ignore that impact. Whether you like it or not, an 800-square-foot bookstore doesn't generate the same foot or vehicle traffic that a 10,000-square-foot restaurant does, or a 119-room hotel, or an 800-seat theater. That's why the hotel and Majestic have drop-off spaces directly in front of their businesses. The Borough needs these spaces as well in order to keep the streets and pedestrians safe and keep the traffic moving, and the large hospitality businesses need them in order to operate successfully. Placing one 15-minute drop-off space on the square is not a solution to the issue, certainly not for the hotel or the theater, and it wouldn't help the upper crust at all. Which brings me to the reserved spaces in front of the upper crust. Imagine if even one bus wants to drop people off. How are they going to do this without the reserved spaces the way they exist today? They'll stop on York Street, and people will get out and back up traffic through the square for blocks, creating pedestrian safety issues and major traffic jam headaches for residents and tourists. And again, placing one 15-minute drop-off space on every block is not a solution to this issue. Look, the fact is, Linda didn't build this 10,000-square-foot building. She just took it on when no one else would. It was too rundown, too big, and needed way too much money and work. No one else in this town had the vision. No one else in this town had the courage to develop this property. I don't think Borough Council has given enough weight to the impact the upper crust will have on York Street. Not only how much parking income it will generate, how many jobs it will create, but how much pedestrian and vehicle traffic as well. This really is not a difficult decision. The reserved parking permits currently issued, all of them, all of them, not just the upper crust, should remain in place. They all serve critical needs, not only for the businesses, but for the safety of pedestrians and the movement of traffic in the Borough. And just one last thing, I want to clarify, for the record, something that Fred Snyder stated last week in his column. He said that the Borough Manager goes above and beyond to help local merchants, and to prove this, he says that Mr. Gabel had the Borough build a special dumpster pad for some merchants on York Street to help with their trash issues, and that, quote, "The merchant criticizing him never mentioned being one who was using the pad," close quote. The merchant he was referring to, of course, is Linda Atia. So, for the record, Linda paid the Borough over $1,800 to build that dumpster pad, and Linda pays almost $350 every month for trash removal for the two dumpsters on that pad, which, by the way, the Borough also loses at her expense. Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Yes, yes.
Hi, Allison Isner. I live at 61 Olympic Avenue. So, first, let me begin by saying that these comments are my own, that I don't represent any business. In May 2018, you signed into a law, a zoning ordinance that reduced commercial parking requirements to facilitate economic development in the Borough. I mention this now because you used a compelling phrase in the ordinance to highlight the Old Town and Elm Street overlay districts. You specifically excluded these two districts from the requirements, and I quote, "In recognition of the need to strongly encourage new construction or reuse of building space." The deliberate exclusion of the districts from the requirements recognized their acute need for revitalization. You addressed the need to spur growth by removing financial roadblocks to their development in the Borough. Redevelopment takes money, a lot of money, and not every property is the same. Some have more risk associated than others based on size, location, and use. The Moose Building in the Old Town District sat for sale and in decline for years. As a redevelopment project, it was a significant risk. One level, no natural light, and at 64 feet wide, at 164 feet in length, it's more than half a football field deep. Based on location and consumer demographic, including the college, tourism, and the new community housing developments in the region, a premium casual or destination restaurant is the best use of the space. And had a regional or national restaurant development group been interested in the Moose property, I believe you would have worked tirelessly to secure their investment. You would have taken the time to understand the logistics and access needs of a 10,000-square-foot whole-service restaurant, and I'm sure you would have provided them with a customer pickup and drop-off area because it made sense for the business owners and for Gettysburg. And there's no doubt a premium casual or destination restaurant would have transformed the downtown by improving jobs, attracting new businesses, generating increased parking revenue, and in time, increasing commercial property values per cavity tax and occupancy tax. Well, no outside party showed up to develop the project, but Linda Atia did, and she took risk to develop the Moose property into the upper crust, knowing that she had the rights to use the reserved spaces for customer drop-off and roadside pickup. Linda is a smart and savvy businesswoman in her own right. She would not have developed the upper crust without the reserved spaces, and neither would anyone else. It just doesn't make sense. I draw this hypothetical comparison for a reason, because the size, scale, and needs of the upper crust project are no different than that of a large or premium destination restaurant. Yet you've chosen to make it as difficult as possible for local businesswomen to redevelop the neglected downtown property. You seem unwilling to look at or consider the logistics and access needs of a project this size. She deserves the same respect you give the college and any other developer in Gettysburg. Times have changed. Welcome to the 21st century. You don't have to be a National Restaurant Development Group, corporation, or institution to build something big, and your gender is irrelevant. I don't know how to describe this in any other way. It is discrimination to treat her differently. No one is saying that because Linda Atia has invested 15 years and a significant amount of money in the Borough that the upper crust project should receive special treatment. The point is that all businesses are not the same. A 500-seat restaurant that's more than half a football field deep is not the same as a 50, 100, or even 200-seat restaurant. The crucial fact to walk away with here is that a development project the size of the upper crust has access needs that are fundamentally different than other businesses. When you voted last year to revise the zoning ordinance, you did so to facilitate economic development in the Borough. You recognize the dire need in the Old Town District, and that need still exists. Why not work tirelessly with Linda instead of against her? The upper crust will do as much, if not more, for Gettysburg than a regional or national chain, and the money will stay here in Gettysburg. Linda Atia is a proven commodity. She has already transformed York Streets with her projects, and the upper crust will continue that momentum. Allowing her to use the previously granted reserved parking spaces makes sense and is a win-win for the upper crust and Gettysburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, yes.
Judy McGee, 256 Baltimore Street. What they said, with the comment, "Y'all work hard, and I know you earn your 12 cents an hour. You really do. It's hard, and what you're trying to do here is really hard, because you all want to do the right thing." And having lived here through the last 24 years and seen some of the interesting decisions and comments, this is so black and white to the outsider. I have no idea, all these brilliant ideas. I wish I had some of your ideas and some of the thoughts you guys had, because it's like, yeah, I could say something really smart. But all I can say is, common sense, black and white, you had the rules. She followed the rules. She made millions of dollars of investment based on your rules, and now you want to change your rules after she's already in. And I've been here through the last several years of litigation and lawsuits and lawyering and nonsense, and I'm one of those taxpayers. I'm not one of the nonprofits. And I love you all for your budget. Thank you for not raising taxes, although we got another fee coming, but you know what? It's across the board. The fee is fair. I don't like it, but I'm good with that. As long as we have more fees and less taxes, I'm a happy camper. It's got to be all or nothing. You either grandfather those in who played by your rules, and I know Wes, you don't like that, and that's okay. So, don't. Cut them all. Either give them all, cut them all. But you can't give some and cut some and not have two or three more years of just hell and, pardon me, bullshit that I really don't want to have to do, because I live here, and I want you all, you're doing a good job, and I want to keep what's going on in this council, because I see the benefit of this council from past years where it's not been so good. So, just think and read your own rules, follow your own rules, and do the right thing. Either everybody in or everybody out, but you can't have some in and some out, because that's just going to be trouble for everybody that we don't need.
Anybody else before we, yes, Chad?
I spoke to you a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to reiterate-
Can you give your name?
Sure.
Chat on, our 49 York Street. Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate what Judy just said. I agree completely with what she just said. And I live here, I work here, I'm a taxpayer, I'm on York Street, I've had no issues whatsoever. It's not bothered our business whatsoever. You know, I applaud everything she's doing, and again, just like Judy said, she played by your rules. To go back now is just a really low move. It's just not right. I think that what she's doing is incredible for our town. Not everybody agrees, and that's fine. Everyone is entitled to their own opinion. But someone that is investing in our town and many properties within the Borough is paying taxes on all of those properties. She's not a not-for-profit. She deserves your respect. She deserves everybody else's respect. She's going to make a lot of jobs for Gettysburg. She's going to bring a lot of people to Gettysburg. There are venues all over the place, but not quite like what she's creating with the upper crust, and I could see a lot of people wanting to come to that venue that can seat that many people and have great food and entertainment. We've got some beautiful venues in Adams County. We've got some beautiful venues right here in the Borough of Gettysburg. We don't have something as unique as what the upper crust would bring to us. She played by your rules. She's willing to pay what you asked. I think you need to work with her, have an open dialogue with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, yes.
Alexandra Scalera, I'm a business owner throughout Allen, and my husband and I own that on 32 East Lincoln Avenue, and I spoke here recently also. And I understand that she's got a lot of lovely properties and think that the one that she already has is beautiful, and I think that the one she's going to, is working on is going to be beautiful also. I'm not against the properties. It's unfortunate that this situation has come to be what it is, and I see that, you know, 500 seats of a restaurant's a very nice situation, but I believe that the Gettysburg Hotel probably seats at least 500, probably when they have weddings. Apparently, they seem to have figured out how to seat people and find parking. I don't think it's going to be a good thing to have this completely wiped out where the B&amp;Bs and hotels have no place for their guests to unload their luggage, and they're going to be hauling their luggage down the sidewalks and bumping into your people on the way to the restaurant. That's not a good thing for your customers or for anyone else, or for the elderly people trying to be, having a good time here in Gettysburg. And I really find that there seems to be no happy medium here. It's an all-or-nothing situation, and I don't really know if it started as a misunderstanding with the parking situation. From what I understood, from my right-to-know request, it was just really for construction. And I'm really sad that it's come to this, and I really don't want to see any lawsuits. I don't want to see any more of a burden on this town, and, you know, I'd like to see a happy situation for everyone, and I'd really like to see things grandfathered in. I don't see, I don't know of any situation that seems to be able to stand for that. But I really hate to see old people hauling luggage down bumpy sidewalks. It's hard enough to just walk around here. But I hope that by some miracle of God, something good can come out of this, and that there can be peace in our community, and that good things can happen for you, too. And I wish you the best, and I wish the rest of the lodging in town to have success. It's hoping good to come out of this and not have people being injured trying to get to their properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Malawiki.
Yeah.
You, I'm calling on you.
Yeah, I know. He has a teacher.
You had something for the comment period. I don't want to close it down.
Well, I'm Mike Malawiki, 2 West Broadway, and I have some compatriots here from the Broadway area, and I was going to wait till the agenda item, but I will say that the Broadway folks have voted, something like 80% of us have voted, and I gave some of you the actual list, approving a neighborhood improvement district, a NID, with the idea that the Borough would be working on West Broadway, and they would replace the islands, and a NID would basically be developing a fund for the future repair and replacement of the islands, period. That's what it would be for. So, in a way, you could call it a fee we're imposing on ourselves, or a tax, but the neighborhood is in agreement with the concept, and we know from the attorneys that there has to be, there's a formal process, but I'm here to say, and others can certainly stand up and say anything they'd like to say, but as a group, we're at the 80%, and I think we have to be at 60%. So, the NID hopefully will go forward, and we will work with the Borough closely to see that that occurs. Hopefully, you guys will, folks will vote.
So, you have a petition that you're-
Well, I don't have an actual petition. I can share with the actual signed letters from folks, and we can do the count, but that's why I gave you the summary Excel sheet of the property, the name, and yes, no, or no response. So-
Yes, and we will-
We're concerned that no response is enough.
Right, we will include that in our discussion when we get to Broadway and the process and so forth. Okay, all right.
Anybody else?
Thank you. Okay, good. Okay, any other comments on any of the either new business or old business items? Okay, hearing none? Okay, Dawn?
Okay, Diamond, East Broadway. So, I just wanted to say publicly that there's, I think there's a consensus among people on East Broadway that we not have islands.
East Broadway.
Yeah. East, more.
East, more.
And never the 20 shall meet. Yes. That, and we have, I would say, at least two traffic-
Speed tables.
Speed tables. Speed tables. And the narrowing of the street to increase the permeable space as the MS 4 requires. So-
Okay. No islands. Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right, then, we are going to proceed with our meeting agenda. New business. The Garden Club memorandum of understanding. Charles, do you want to say anything about that?
Just that we met with the leadership of the Garden Club and came to an understanding that the labor burden for the watering should coincide with the non-uniform contract labor rates over the next five years, ending in 2022, which is when the new labor agreement terminates.
And that was the only really significant change to the agreement from what we had in 2018, which was a one- in 2018, which was a one-year agreement. Is that correct, Charles?
That is correct. So this is a multi-year agreement that mirrors the rates of, the wage rates in the contract.
And I did, we did receive an email earlier today from the president of the Garden Club indicating that the club had a meeting and have, and voted to approve this agreement. So it will be on our agenda for the February council meeting to take this up for approval.
I have a question.
Yes.
Charles, this is Patty. Was, in your meeting with the Garden Club, was there any further discussion about an increased contribution from Destination Gettysburg with the flowers?
There was not a specific line of conversation regarding that, although I think the consensus is, it would be helpful if they, they may contribute more to things that would benefit the visitors. And obviously, this is an item that not only benefits the residents of Gettysburg, but the tourists enjoy this program as much as the residents do, and that's their job, is to cater to and market the town, and the flowers market the town. So it would be helpful if we got some more out of Destination Gettysburg.
And is that something that, when you return, we can discuss, then? I'd be happy to participate in those discussions?
Sure.
Because I agree. It's, you know, four Ps of marketing. One of them is product, and those flowers are product. So I'd like to see an increase from them.
Be happy to have the conversation.
And with that, also, in terms of the fact that they do receive pillow tax money, I'd love to be able to see the budget, so maybe we can add that to our discussion, too, because we've never seen their budget.
Sure.
And they do receive tax money. Okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other comments about this draft agreement? Okay. We're very grateful to the Garden Club for picking this project up when they did. This is a separate from the flowers that are in the circle, which they have done for decades, and they completely fund that and do all that work. And this was a project for the flower baskets that they picked up, and they provide the funding for it, and we, we take on the labor as far as finding someone to water and keep that up. So, and that's all set out in this agreement.
Right. And it really is a labor love. They do such a great job with it.
Yeah. It does add a lot to the program. Any other comments, then? This will be on the agenda for the February 11th meeting, then. Okay. FEMA Flood Plane Appeal Notification Appeal Period. We're gonna, we're gonna go to our Borough Engineer, Ked Clayball, for this, and he'll explain what this is about.
Okay. Thank you. So, and I did mention this at the Borough Council meeting during my engineer's report as well, but I wanted to give you a little bit more information on exactly what we're talking about here. So FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, they've been working on new flood mapping for several years now. This is all of Adams County they've been doing this with, not just Gettysburg Borough. But each municipality got an individual notice. Our notice was received on December 10th that these preliminary maps, and we'll call them preliminary maps because they will, after this appeal process, be adopted by FEMA, and then they'll become the actual firms. We're used to that acronym, FIRM, the Flood Insurance Rate Map. That's what identifies if you have, to have flood insurance if you have a mortgage on your property. Those are the regulatory maps, and those will be changed once this appeal process has expired. So we've noticed that these preliminary firms are ready for review. They've published a notice in the Federal Register. They also published it twice in the Gettysburg Times on December 13th and December 18th. There's a 90-day appeal period, so 90 days from December 18th gets you to March 20th. So that's the end of this appeal process. I'm reading off of this Federal Emergency Management Agency document, so please work with me. So they have an appeal procedure, and this is important, because this isn't something that a property owner could just say, "Well, I'm not happy with this, and I want mine changed." You've gotta go through a procedure. They have a document here. I'm holding this document. It's 13 pages long, and this document identifies that you need to have a technical and scientific backing to your appeal. So I think that's important to note, that if a property owner isn't happy with the new flood plane mapping, what I should say is that FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineers spent years preparing this with a team of civil engineers. They've contacted my office through the process. I've sent them mapping on bridges, on the school district property. They put a lot of work in here. So somebody that wants to change one of these things is gonna have to have a similar amount of effort to say that they have better information. It doesn't, I'm not saying that, that can't happen, because there are times where they just get it wrong. Everybody's human. But they just don't want people just saying, "Hey, I'm not happy with this, and I want it changed."
Chad, is this, is this map, where is this map? Is it available on a website?
Yes.
Okay.
It's FEMA.gov backslash preliminary flood hazard data. Again, that's FEMA.gov backslash preliminary flood hazard data. And this is also, that was also published in that Gettysburg Times article.
Okay.
They're not the easiest things to look at. They're PDFs. And I had to go through and basically start at the beginning and just keep going, because it's just organized by the whole county. It's not labeled with anything that I could discern. Like, I tried to match their map grid, and the numbers were not the same pattern of numbers.
They're a little, they're a little bit hard to view. We also received, if somebody wants to get into the specific details, Charles received a stack of paperwork on this, a foot high, with a disc, that there's some maybe more higher resolution definition maps that we can, we can show you if you really wanted to look into specifics of an area.
You could see pretty well online, but it's, it's more difficult than looking at the current map. The current maps, you can zoom in and out, navigate around. It's pretty easy.
So FEMA gives folks two ways to appeal. They can either appeal directly to FEMA, or what they prefer is they come through the local government, Gettysburg Borough. That's FEMA's attempt to reduce the number of appeals that they're getting, especially if there's a regional issue. You know, if there's more than one people that are affected by the same bridge or something like that, they would rather have those 10 people to get together and go through the borough. So they outline a process where they would like people to go through the local municipality. And then finally, this is what I'm kind of looking for some direction from you guys on. They suggest, and Charles, Charles Gable and I went to a training on this, and they made this same suggestion to us, while it is not your responsibility to do anything with this at this point, other than listen to appeals, they do suggest that you reach out to some of your constituents. Again, you don't have to. They've already published this in the Gettysburg Times. But if you wish to, and I'll just read here, it says, "Your community may find it appropriate to call further attention to the proposed flood hazard determinations and to the appeal procedure by using a press release or other public notice." So what I would suggest, if you want to do that, CS Davis can help with that, and I wouldn't say that you would have to reach out to every constituent in Gettysburg. Most of us aren't affected by the flooding. There's, I'm gonna say about 200 properties that are within a flood zone. There's really two flood zones in the boroughs. Culp's Run over to the east side here, that's the one that starts at the Farnsworth Building, goes through the Farnsworth, under the school, and comes out behind at Gettysburg Municipal Authority. There's also Stevens Run, that's the mainstream that goes through the heart of Gettysburg, commonly known as the Tiber. And that one's really the one that has most of the flooding on it. Tiber has a few. The big ticket item, I will say, and I've worked with FEMA on this one, the Gettysburg Middle School has been removed from that mapping. That was important as part of the land development that we went through whenever the Gettysburg Middle School was built a couple of years ago. So we did make sure that that was taken care of. But otherwise, there's, there's probably 100 properties, mainly along the Tiber. If you can picture, the Creekside Apartments has a couple of dozens, properties right there, just in the Creekside Apartments. So what you could do is, the folks that are affected, we have the maps, we were able to get those from FEMA and into a format that we could download into a spreadsheet, and we could do a mail merge to all 100 of those folks that are affected by this, including a blow-up of the map in their area to show them exactly how they're being affected. If you want, we could do that, or if you think it suffices to have the public notices that were already put out there, along with this public, this presentation and the notice at the council meeting, that's fine, too. So what's your wishes on those options?
Does anybody have any thoughts about this? I mean, there is a definite impact on the property owners that are within the flood plane in terms of, and they, they should, it would probably be best, I think it'd probably be best to notify them that this, there have been changes in that, so they at least know that there's something going on. I don't think a legal notice, you know, probably does that very well. Does anybody have any other thoughts about that? If you can do a mail merge to those properties?
Yeah, it doesn't take a lot of effort to send out the mail merge. What I'll caution, though, is the reaction to that. There may be a decent amount of time that gets wrapped up into, and costs associated with responding to property owners that just may call just to talk, to want to talk it through, and want to know more, and want to understand it.
I wasn't noticing a lot of changes.
Not from the current. Significant changes. There is about 100 properties that are changed, but not significant ones.
Okay.
Some of them, some of them have been reduced.
Okay.
There are some that have been reduced. Not all of them have been increased.
So there's fewer properties on, in the flood plane?
Right. Or, or, or the amount of flooding on that property has been limited.
Okay.
Chad, could we, because I agree with Susan, I think good communication with the residents who are on that flood plane is important. And maybe to help mitigate a little bit of your concern about, you know, receiving a lot of phone calls and then repeatedly responding the same way to the homeowners, could you include, like, a FAQ, a fact sheet?
Absolutely.
That would, you know, you'd think about what are gonna be some of the most common questions asked, and then to include that, and that might help to mitigate that.
Yep.
You know, and then maybe even have on the letter, you know, in the email, you know, if you have additional concerns that aren't answered, you could call a helpline on and designate, you know, one or two days between, you know, 1 and 2, and 5 and 6, to get people, you know, lunch and work, you know, home, and they could call as a suggestion.
Can we, can we assume that most of the people who were in the flood plane in the last map that went out would, would know that they're in the flood plane?
Yeah.
So that would limit the number of people that would question it.
Right. And I'm thinking, like I said, I think there's probably about 200 properties that are total that are in the flood plane, only 100 of those being affected. So I wouldn't suggest sending notices to the other 100 people, saying, "Nothing's changing." That's just business as usual for those folks. I would say we'd only send it to the folks that are changing.
Right.
I would, I would want to know just as much if I'm getting added as if I'm getting eliminated.
Right.
Because I might be paying flood insurance now, and I need to call my insurance company in the spring, once this new map's changed, if I'm no longer in the flood plane.
So you can target the changes, the changed properties?
Yes. It's either green if they were, they were removed, or red if they were added.
Okay.
And we, and we'll break it up in the, in the areas, certain areas of the borough. So it sounds like it's pretty, I mean, and this doesn't take a formal Borough Council motion. This is just administrative to kind of direct me to move forward with sending out those notices, and then I'll follow up with the report at the council meeting.
Okay. Does anybody object to that going head that way? Charles, do you have any comments about this at all?
I don't have anything to add to what Chad said.
Okay. All right. I think that gives you some direction. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Chad on this? No? Okay. Thank you. Next item is the Healthy Adams County Bicycle Pedestrian Incorporated Right-of-Way Agreements with SpectraCode and with, this would be also with SCAP. And this is just an update. The last update that we, we received as a council on this was back in February of 2018. So it's been a year that Habby has been working on this project. And so we thought it was, they're, they're coming to the point where they've gotten some grant money and so forth, and they're ready to deal with these agreements in a more formal way within the next couple of months. So Chad is gonna just give us a little bit of a reminder what this project is and an update about where they are with that.
I'll just sneak over to this side of the room here and have a pointer.
So, as Susan said, it's the opportunity to try to move forward with this, this piece of the Gettysburg inner loop, which would really be a spur from the inner loop out towards the Gettysburg school. There's two property owners who keep forward and said that they would be willing to give an easement to the borough at no cost. Those property owners are SCAP, and this is SCAP here. I'm sorry. SpectraCode, SpectraCode here and SCAP, which is here. We've pretty much identified the path through SpectraCode's piece of this. This is the path here that we're looking to install. But then this piece that crosses the back of SCAP's property isn't entirely identified yet. We're hoping that, and this is the ready site. We're not sure about this piece, whether it should be lining up with Foth Alley, or if it should come back to the back here along the railroad tracks. We're hoping to work with the developers soon on that to kind of nail that down. It's just gonna affect this, this corner of that easement. So we're pretty close with that piece, but we do want to make sure that we're making this thing tie in properly with the ready site development. So that's it. Two pieces of this, of this trail with two different properties. The piece across the ready site, we would deal with whenever we get to the development of that property. So we're only gonna be dealing with an easement across SCAP, and then an easement across the SpectraCode. If you can just zoom up a little bit there, Wes, I'll show you one more thing. So this comes up along Water Street here, and it stops at this entrance. There's another proposed development, townhome development, that's currently active on the borough's record. This piece would marry up with the sidewalk that would get built with that townhome development. Once I've finished with my work, have identified the easement exhibits, I'll be turning those over to Habby. Habby's employee, Matt Teeter, to develop an easement agreement, which will get put forth to the council, and at that time, Harry will take a look at it, and if he's happy with it, then the council will have to make a vote on those two easements, basically accepting the right-of-way to be able to build this. That's the end of this project at this point, just to get the right-of-way. Then we'll have to take the next step to pursue funding for construction.
And Tom Jolen had provided me with some information also, in that the cost of this is all being covered by Habby, either through funds that they have raised or funds from the Adams County Community Foundation. They applied for a grant from them. And that includes funding to cover any kind of borough legal review that's done, as well as their legal, and for SCAP's legal work, and the same funds for SpectraCode as well. So they've set this up to cover all of that. So, does anybody have any questions or comments about this project, where it is? Okay. All right. Thank you, Chad. Next item is the Gettysburg Stormwater Authority, the Borough Services Rendered Agreement. Charles, do you want to start off with this?
Yeah, I can give a brief overview. Yeah, I can give a brief overview of this. Give me just a second, I'm trying to open up the file, so I have it in front of me. I opened up the garden club contract. Okay, so the agreement concept here is the Stormwater Authority obviously was created to deal with RMS4 compliance with the federal mandates. The reason the authority was created, again, goes to speak to that. However, what we don't necessarily, or we aren't really interested in doing is creating another large bureaucracy that would have a large number of staff members and other overhead. So essentially, what the authority is going to do is while they have a board of directors who would oversee the projects, RMS4 projects, pollution reduction plan projects that the borough is undertaking, they essentially would be in turn contracting with the borough to do all of that work, whether that would be administrative work or also the construction work. And so this is just an agreement between the newly created authority and the borough, memorializing that relationship. And if you look at the last page of the draft agreement, you'll see the specific list of duties that the borough would be responsible for on behalf of the authority, from financial matters to engineering matters to the administration and construction matters, they're listed there. And then, of course, I have a footnote there that this may not be a comprehensive list that's currently envisioned, but that essentially all functions of the authority would actually be undertaken by the borough. And then the borough would essentially invoice the authority from time to time with an itemized invoice for then the authority to pay for those services rendered by the borough's staff.
Okay. Chad, do you have anything to add to that at all?
Really?
Not at that point, okay. And I think you are looking for this to be on the agenda for the February 11th meeting, is that correct, Charles?
Yeah, currently we're targeting, as you may know, the authority has essentially agreed to meet on the same evening that council business meetings occur at 6 o'clock, so that this could be passed by both the authority's board of directors and then later that evening of February 11th by the borough council. It's on your agenda tonight to make sure that everyone is on the same page and answer any questions or add or delete things that you think might be needed here in this draft agreement.
Okay. Did anybody have any comments or suggestions for the agreement at all? Okay, hearing none, I think you can proceed with this draft.
I would also just note that Adam Boyer, who is the solicitor for the authority, has looked at this, and this is the final version that he came back with, so this has already seen solicitors review.
All right.
I have a question, Susan.
Yes.
I assume that we'll have reporting from this new authority at our business meetings from now on, like we do with the water authority?
Yes, yeah. We'll add that to our agenda, so for our business meetings, so that we'll hear from those.
Not that I want another report.
Yeah, and I think many on council are on that meeting, so you'll know what happened there. So someone will be reporting to the others of us who are not on that authority board, so, okay. That concludes the new business, I believe. So now we're on to old business, and we're on to the Policy Briefing 2018-4, which is Chapter 15 Parking Revisions. So Richard, do you want to kick this off?
Sure.
Okay.
First, I'd like to thank the public, not only for continuing to voice your concerns as well as your suggestions, but also giving back to not only council, but also the department feedback on how we can move forward. It's been very good to hear such fruitful conversations, and I wish that they continued. So let me just start off again by saying thank you. With that being said, we got to this point because the meter bags or the temporary reserve meter bag ordinance, Chapter 7, was not executed the way it was intended. And so what I was tasked with was the opportunity to modify and improve upon some of those intentions. So with that being said, I had a chance to sit down with council, and we put together some thoughtful revisions, and we produced the document that I think can at least get the conversation started in the right direction. How we move forward, I'm going to lean on council to push us in that direction. So again, council, I don't know if you want to add anything to it in regards to the different ordinances that we made revisions to, but I'm open to hearing from you as well.
I thought what we do is we'll go through the ordinance and see what comments folks have to that, see if there are any changes that be recommended, so we have that up on the screen. This is Part 7. I'm going to start with Part 4, Chapter 15, Part 4. This was also something, that's okay. This is also something that has been presented to council, and we postponed action on Part 4 as well. Part 4 has to do with the changes across the street at the north side of High Street that we made to the parking over there and adding the parking for handicapped and so forth. And that required an update of the ordinance to do that. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So does anybody have any problems or questions about Part 4? Okay, hearing none.
And I would note, I just wanted to, I want to make sure I didn't misunderstand council's action, but it was my understanding you did not postpone action on those ordinance requirements, and in fact, you authorized the publication for intended enactment because I've got a letter, it hasn't been published, but I, there's a letter I signed that's going to the Gettysburg Times tomorrow morning requesting that the ordinance be published for intended enactment at the February 11th meeting.
Okay.
But I haven't sent it yet, so if I'm mistaken in that regard, please let me know.
No, I think you are correct, because we divided that into two, we had two motions.
That is correct, yeah.
And we broke this up into two motions.
It was always meant to be two separate ordinances.
So that is going out as it was presented in the first draft that we got. This Part 7 was revised, I guess, before the last meeting, and so this was a second version of that that we took up at our business meeting. So what we want to do tonight is go through and considering comments that have been made and so forth, see what direction, if any, we want to give Richard and staff with respect to this ordinance and what we want to do with it.
Keeping in mind that ultimately what we need to capture in any ordinance is the legislative intent of the borough in terms of its regulations. One of the things that I've recommended, because there has been a lot of commentary, if you would, regarding what is the intent of the Borough Council, oftentimes what you do is, and I'm going to recommend we do this, is that you, that we articulate what it is your legislative purpose is for changing the regulations in question. Why is it, and the reason is, I mean, and just to kind of frame this, if you will, I mean, it's very clear that we're in an area that you're able to regulate, okay? The Pennsylvania Borough Code provides that you have specific powers, including in the operation of your utilities, parking meters, parking lots, recreational facilities, and other facilities and services, to make and regulate charges for them for general borough purposes. More particularly on point is the power found in the Borough Code that you are to provide for parking as follows. To regulate parking and provide parking accommodations to promote the convenience and the protection of the public. And that is the specific power that you are going to be operating under. Keeping in mind that essentially what this ordinance is, is, I mean, your basic municipal service that you're providing is public parking, okay? That's why you have metered zones, that you're providing public parking. So what you're now looking at is under what limited circumstances are you going to allow public parking to be removed from public parking and temporarily reserved? And there are legitimate governmental interests in that. But I'm going to want you to articulate that. That's going to be, because candidly, I mean, and I really hope we're not heading toward litigation in this regard, but if we are, let me say that one of the most important things that a court will look at is what was your legislative intent in enacting those regulations? We're going to spell that out. The courts have spoken on this. I think it's important to note that essentially that the courts have determined that you do have very broad powers in terms of regulating your parking. In fact, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court has indicated that municipal parking restrictions involve neither suspect classes nor fundamental rights. And appropriate standards applied in determining whether they violate equal protection provisions of the Pennsylvania Constitution. So essentially, so that you understand, I mean, there is an ability to treat different classes of parking differently, but you need to have what is called a rational basis, a rational basis to do that. When you're doing this, I mean, you are doing this, you're exercising what are called your police powers, lowercase p. There has to be a substantial relationship to the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the public. So when you do this regulation, it can't be arbitrary, unreasonable. The, I mean, the rational basis test, it's interesting, because we hear people talking about common sense. Everybody thinks that when you talk about the law, common sense goes out the window. Actually, the rational basis is, is that there has to be some common sense linkage, if you will, between your regulation and that which you're trying to protect. So common sense is not thrown out the window. It's something that you should consider as we go forward with these regulations. I would note, and I feel terribly uncomfortable, that this discussion seems to be focused, or has been focused, on a single business, because I would instruct you that that's improper. It should, it would be improper for you to consider harming a single business by your regulations, and it would be improper for you to benefit a single business by the way in which you regulate. In fact, the courts have said just that. There is a case that I've reviewed out of Northumberland County that provided that the Borough Council had a specific manufacturing entity that had provided, I mean, they were a very, very important economic provider to, for the borough and so forth. And the borough actually set out some reserved parking specifically for employees of this manufacturing entity. The courts noted that in the records, there were seven other similar entities in that particular borough. And striking down that ordinance, actually what happened is that a resident in that neighborhood parked in front of the manufacturing facility was ticketed by the borough, and then he challenged the validity of the ordinance. The court said, "It is rather this type of discriminatory legislation without substantial relationship to the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the public that is deemed arbitrary, unreasonable, beyond the police power of a municipality, and therefore invalid." So remember, you're legislating on an even-handed basis. And that's kind of, I wanted to frame that for you as you think through and as you review this ordinance, if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to this, Solicitor?
Yes, please.
And I thought I'd start with a quick disclaimer, and I want to see if council agrees or disagree. As opposed to business meetings, I think workshops, at least I've taken them to mean, and this is only my first year, that we come in perhaps not with our mind made up, but we use the workshop opportunity to hammer things out, so at the business meeting, we're closer to our minds being made up. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing that you said before I asked a question that I resonate with is that, I said this before, that this, in my mind, is not a referendum on any particular business owner. So if people are supportive of business owners, or if they're negative on business owners, to me, that is largely irrelevant to policymaking decisions in this council. At the same time, I don't think this should be a referendum on our borough staff. Our borough staff is sort of responsive to council. The only people this should be a referendum on is council. So if you don't like what council's doing, there are ways to deal with that, and it's called elections. So I thought, I just wanted to say that, because so much of our commentary has been wrapped up in individuals, and I think policy should strive not to do that. But more to the point of the question, there has been commentary about changing the rules in the middle of the game, and I thought maybe either Susan, this president, or our solicitor could speak to that, because in the world that I've largely inhabited on planning, we do change the rules, meaning we make ordinance revisions when there are pressures in the community that require them. So like this year alone, this past year, we revised parking regulations for new development because the trends suggest that places don't have to be mandating, the councils and municipalities don't have to mandate excessive parking on their businesses. It should be relaxed a little to incentivize. So planning went through this for weeks and weeks and months and months after that, and we changed the rules. We did the same for the SADO or the subdivision land development ordinance. Our engineer came to us and said, "There are things about this ordinance that we need to improve, because the trends have changed, pressures have changed, technology's changed," and we made the change. And then the final, even though I protested this and still protest it, we changed the ROR zoning district, because pressures were, incentives exist, and we went with it. So could the solicitor or the chair deal with the commentary that suggests that we are doing something improper, illegal, unethical, when we make ordinance revisions? Because from where I sit on council, I see, now I know these are zoning ordinances, and it's different than the policing powers of parking, but am I correct to say that we can change, quote, "rules" or "regulations" as new pressures, as new realities come to fore in the borough?
Yeah, I think that's very clear. You are, candidly, I mean, what function would you have if you, if this particular council, we have so many ordinances on the books and so forth? I think that it is always candidly your, on your watch that you need to take a look and see whether regulations that applied in 1985 should be still applied. That's, I've used 1985, because that's basically, these regulations have been unchanged since Facts and circumstances change, and if you believe that there is a proper governmental function in terms of, you know, the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the public, I mean, that's not something that's stagnant, that is something that evolves, if you will. You should always, I mean, I would say you're not doing your job if you're not reviewing and taking a look at making amendments and modifications. Candidly, we do that all the time, and you should review that. And as I understand, I mean, the reason I started in a drafting process is that, I mean, there were some issues that were raised with you, heck, it was probably close to a year ago, not quite, but I think maybe starting in March of 2018, that there were some issues with regards to the administration of the regulations here in place, which I think had a fair amount of flexibility when they were first put into place, and there probably was good rationale for that. But at the end of the day.
Right.
There's nothing illegal or wrong or, in terms of-- But at the end of the day, there's nothing illegal or wrong or, or in terms of modifying and changing your ordinances. Candidly, that's part of your job is to do that.
What was the date that you referenced, Terry? March of, what was the date that you referenced?
Nineteen eighty-five is when temporary reservation of parking spaces, provisions essentially came into place.
What, what defines a B&amp;B or hotel?
Well, the reason that, and again, the reason that specifically we use the term hotel and bed and breakfast, and again, it's going to be, you folks are going to decide whether or not you wish to provide that type of temporary reservation, but there's a very sound basis for that. You've already defined those specific uses in your zoning ordinance. So therefore, we're tying it in, if you will, to your use regulations that you already have in place. It would be, I, I think it would be confusing and not good legislation if we didn't work off from uses that you've, where you define uses and that is in the zoning.
Right, and I get that. I'm just saying, what if a, a current business decide, had extra space and they decided to add an addition onto their business to have room rentals and become a B&amp;B as well as whatever their current business situation is? Would they then be a B&amp;B and then be allowed to rent spaces?
Well-
If you change, like, because, you know, like, like for me, I have a use right now, but what if I said, okay, well, I want it to be, you know, I'm going to rent out the second or third floors as rooms and have a coffee shop? And wanted to rent spaces out front? Could I do that?
Keeping in mind that all's worth dealing with is a draft.
Well, I know, and that's why I'm asking, I'm asking because, I mean, I, I see ways around things, and that seems to be, you know-
And what I would say to you is that if a use qualifies under our zoning as a hotel or a bed and breakfast, then it would qualify for being able to, you know, and to be able to make a reservation of parking spaces under, under, as drafted. Again, what I would point out to you is that provision is something that is not the intent of your solicitor, it's not your intent of your, of, of your parking manager and so forth. That was part of the, what we were guided in terms of, so it's got to be your legislative intent if you wish to carve out that reservation of parking for hotels and bed and breakfasts.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I get that. I'm just posing the question, you know, we, you know, and, and I'm posing it to you more, largely to the council, if we carve out hotels and bed and breakfasts, how do we define that? And how do we limit the, the scope? Because what if, what if one property bought a building next to theirs, bought a property next to theirs and said, "Well, I'm going to have this B&amp;B," but then they only decided to use the, they decided to have those rental spaces and then use them for their neighboring business? I mean, you know, I don't, I mean-
A B&amp;B is a B&amp;B.
To you, but what, what, what if, what if you, you own a B&amp;B, but then you also own a, a restaurant or whatever business next to it?
Or an art gallery.
Yeah, an art gallery, and you wanted to use those spaces, couldn't you open up a B&amp;B next to it and say, "Well, I'm going to use these spaces for loading, unloading, or whatever else for this business rather than this business," because I think that this is more important?
Can, can you hold that till we get to that?
Okay, all right, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to pose questions so we, because if we're moving in this direction, that we're carving this out, I want to build a-
Right, because, because there are some examples of that that we'll be looking at, so, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, where do you want to go?
I want to start, these, this is part A, which is reserved parking spaces in unmetred zones. The language is exactly the same, correct? So I think we can start with this, and then it's the same language in part B, which are for metered zones. So, by looking at this language, I think we can start the discussion of that. So, let's start with that. I don't know if you want to talk about the changes at all that have been made here or, and any comments? We've changed who is responsible for the authorizing these, and since we now have a parking manager and a parking department, that's, that's what the main change was there in that. Does anybody have any questions about what you're seeing in A1 here? I had one thought as I was looking at this, and that, and John Lawver had, Councilman Lawver had raised this question last time, and I talked to him on the phone, he could not be here tonight, but he, he had an issue with the use of the word temporary, and the fact that it could kind of open it up for questions if, if you're saying that something is temporary and, and you're, you know, somebody doesn't consider that temporary. So I was wondering if you needed to use the term temporary in the heading here. Can't this just be about reserved parking spaces? And then the temporary comes in down below with, with each item, the, the concept that that's temporary. So that, that was a, a suggestion that I had just to kind of make this a little bit more flexible in, in terms of, of use, using, you know, these reserving meters. Does anybody object to that? Or do you see any problem with that, Richard?
The only challenge I would see with that is that with removing the word temporary, then it's open-ended, and there's not a length of time in which you could either have a parking meter or, not even have, but the length of time that it would end. So that's the only challenge I would see. So you want to close it, or again, put some more specificity into it in regards to length of time. Could you not hear me in the back? I'm sorry.
No.
Right. Thank you, I apologize. So, with removing temporary, the only challenge that I see is the fact that it would be open-ended. And what I would like to do is put some language to it where we would know how long a person, a business, or an organization would have the meter reserved. And so, that's the only challenge that I see in that.
Okay. And we don't, we, we haven't in this defined temporary to, to close that up in terms of, of the time, what that is. Okay.
You're asking to remove it from just two, but retain it for A, B.
Just, just the heading, right where it says, yeah.
Oh, from the whole thing? Oh, I see, I thought you meant under two.
Yeah, headers.
Yeah, that, in the headers, temporary reserved and tempor, and under A, and just remove it from there. You're still going to have the concept of temporary down below, which you could put specific guidance in there, I guess, about the limits.
What I would say to you folks is, are you intending to, what is your intent? Is your intent to have these be temporary reserved parking? Or is your intent to look at it at a more kind of a long-term? Because candidly, I can't, I mean, that's carried forward from, from 1985, doesn't mean it should stay that way and so forth. And certainly there are provisions of the law that we say, you know, in headings and so forth, please don't use that language in terms of the ultimate interpretation. That said, if we're doing temporary parking, I don't know that we can say temporary enough. But if we're, if we're looking at other, I mean, which is, can be legitimate, then we should talk about. And if you have different categories of parking, then we should define that in, within the reservation. So, I mean, it's a, it's a good comment, it's just where are you heading from what you're going to do legislatively here?
Madam President, may I intervene here?
Yes, please do.
So, listening to Manager Miller's discussion and knowing what Councilmember Lawver's concern was regarding temporary was, the fact that currently, the way the ordinance has been administered is that bed and breakfasts and hotels technically were not temporary because they continue to have that, that right and privilege every month on a recurring basis, month after month, essentially then making it permanent. So, speaking to Solicitor Eastman's comment about the intent, perhaps we would want to move in the direction of changing the language from temporary to something more permanent for those specific uses. I just wanted to add that for clarity purposes.
And indeed, that's why there's a specific separate section, if you will, covering hotels and bed and breakfast establishments. Again, this is kind of up to you where you wish to go. This was kind of the direction we were directed toward, but certainly, this is a draft.
Okay.
Can I ask you another question? It seemed like when we started this, it was to clarify language related to loading and unloading. So to answer Solicitor Eastman's question, why are you doing this? What is your vision? If I'm reading or listening to you correctly, it was because there was a concern about the interpretation of that particular part of the ordinance. But as we've moved forward in this, it seems like there are other reasons that we're doing this that go beyond just that. So maybe it is important that we articulate why we are, or what we're doing. Is it because we have a concern about the word temporary? Is it about other things? I think it would be really worthwhile, or maybe you could just help us, from your perspective as our president, what you think we should be.
I think we had a very broad reason in the, in the 1985, you know, ordinance that didn't meet the needs of the community now, and that what, what we set out to do is to be more specific as to when, when those exceptions would be to public parking. It is public parking, first and foremost. And so, what we wanted to set out to do was decide, you know, what in the best interest of the community would call for those exceptions. And so I think that's what, with the guidance we've given, Richard, so far, that's what he's provided us in this, in this draft. So, I think what we'll do is we're going to go through those purposes. The first five are, let's go through those and see if there's any changes to those or any suggestions that anybody has, any additions, anything you'd want to maybe talk about deleting there, so that we can give Richard some guidance going forward for what we want to, you know, put out to the public on this, so.
Right, and what I would say to you is, because you're not looking at a lined-out version of the ordinance, the provision that seemed to give, and, and a lot of problems in terms of administering, was a provision that just said special loading and unloading purposes. I believe it was to give a fair amount of flexibility to borough administration to decide whether or not something was a special purpose in order to give a temporary parking permit. But the issue became, you know, what exactly is that? And I think, I mean, some of the discussion is, is that loading, loading and unloading is a specific, different classification, or should maybe take, or have special attention from an ordinance, from a regulation standpoint, and not be necessarily legislated through your temporary reserve parking spaces. And so a lot of it was to tighten up the reasons, we carry forward most of the reasons that were articulated in 1985. It was just, we removed the special loading and unloading because it was as wide as it was broad, if you will, in terms of, and I think it was intended that way. I think it was intended to give a fair amount of discretion on the part of administration to do that, but that was not the, the direction that we were guided in, in terms of that.
Yeah, the exact wording, and I think that was in the policy briefing, 301, states that generally the loading and unloading goods, wares, and merchandise from any motor vehicles. Section 2 with the purpose of loading and unloading goods, wares, and merchandise, commercial businesses, office, and dining establishes with the sole and specific purpose of loading and unloading, that doesn't make much sense, but goods, wares, and merchandise. Is that how the, it currently read, reads? Okay. Yeah. So, we wanted to provide more guidance on that. So what we've come up with here is, under purposes, these would be the, the exceptions to public parking, our temporary reserve parking for passenger buses, and large-capacity vans for use only in the loading and unloading of passengers for visitation at historic sites and tourist attractions. And we have had some comments about that. So, one of the discussions was, we do have performing, performance centers like the theater, we have the community theater down on York Street, and so, and currently, the Majestic Theater is bagging meters in order to get their buses in there, because there's a lot of bus traffic to performances there. I don't know about movies in general, but the use of the theater does have a lot of bus traffic coming in. So, they do, are currently bagging meters. So, the question was, is that a tourist attraction, or do we need to, you know, what, what do we want to do with that?
My, my question there would be, do we define the terms historic sites and tourist attractions?
Good question.
In zoning, is that?
Do you have access to our, I was, I can ask you to pull up the definitions.
Okay. Do you know what, um-
It's in the beginning of our chat, isn't it?
I could search it by tourist attraction and see if it's there. I could get. It's used other places, but-
Wes, I would just open up the zoning ordinance, and I think the first section of that is all of our definitions. We put them all in one place.
Okay.
Okay, what, what were the words you wanted to know? Yeah?
Zoning, historic site and tourist attraction.
Historic sites.
Maybe, yeah, they're there.
And the other one was?
Historic sites.
Tourist.
I'd say historic sites is a no.
Yeah.
And candidly, folks, that wasn't the intent of that language, actually. What we were trying to do was better work with the provision that had parties of tourists and visiting businesses, civic and governmental groups, which, so, I mean, honestly, I mean, if there is a category of, of, I mean, let's put it in there, if there's a, I mean, that you wish to have, that, it wasn't intended to be, but that's something you can take a look at.
And I think what I was seeing through communications, and one of the concerns here is we're trying to make sure that this is clear for administration, and the concern expressed by communication was essentially that they would be not included in the definition of what is a tourist attraction.
Yeah.
But certainly that could go the other direction also. We could be back in the same circumstance with someone expressing that, "Well, this indeed is a tourist attraction," and getting that type of disagreement. Although candidly, I think it kind of goes back to the 85 version where at a certain point, those administering the ordinance have to make a call.
Yeah.
So we try to make it as reasonable as possible, but there are limits.
I mean, it's taking a look at what are the type of uses that are going to have, that would have large vans or buses doing a temporary loading and unloading of passengers. doing a temporary loading and unloading of passengers? So, certainly, it can be expanded in that regard.
I, my thought was that you could add something like Centers for the Performing Arts, something like that, where you would have large crowds that are, I don't know.
I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that that's a tourist attraction, but I'm not a lawyer. You know, with someone expressed about a museum, there's no doubt in my mind that museums are tourist attraction.
Right. And then again, you say, I'm not a lawyer. Candidly, it's not about, I mean, there is an element of common sense. And it is not to be ultra-conservatively interpreted to, so, but a theater would be an appropriate thing to add in there. I don't think that that's, I mean, if that's what council would want to do. Take a look at, I mean, if you feel that that language is too limiting, let's add to it. Now, you see how fun this is to write this stuff.
But if you don't, then a retail place could say, we get X amount of people that come to our store, and it's tourist attraction. So, if you don't define it somewhat.
Well, theater is defined in the zoning ordinance. It's defined as a building or part of a building devoted to the showing of motion pictures or theatrical or performing arts, which would also cover the community theater as a principal use, but not including an outdoor drive-in theater or adult movie theater. Do we have those anymore? I don't think so. So, that is defined. So, I mean, that's something that.
And back in 1985, it would, the Majestic was not the majestic as it is today, too.
Yeah, right.
It's changed. So, when you talk about this being a dynamic plan that we should be reviewing and looking at and not setting it, we're not setting it stone. I mean, that's a change that's occurred, so.
And the new performing arts, the theater down the street on York Street, the community theater is new since 85 as well. And we could have others. So, is that something that there would be any huge objections to adding to the list in there?
I mean, I don't think we should have that in there at all.
What? That provision?
For, yeah, yeah.
At all?
I don't think we should be researching that at all.
For vans or buses or, okay.
And one of the things that, I mean, that I think was looked at, I think, is what are, taking a look at, what are some of the uses that people have been requesting temporary reservation of spaces to accommodate those? It wasn't to, oh, okay, we're looking to cut people off, but, you know, where are, you know, where are the situations where you have been requested to temporarily reserve? Like the Shriver House would be an example, et cetera, so.
And I mean, I understand the purpose, but I don't, I don't think we should. It's too difficult, in my opinion, for us to try to negotiate this way around allowing for buses on, to park on the main streets. You know what I mean? I think we should be focusing on putting them in the alleys or off the main streets.
I'm not sure our alleys accommodate buses very well. Did, anybody share?
Well, I'm, we're talking about the rational basis, and one of it is safety and welfare. And I think you probably should carve out something for the historic attractions and theaters because you got a whole lot of people coming off of buses, and you don't have that in many other places than those type of venues.
Right, and walking alleys or.
A lot of the buses on Carlisle Street in front of the Majestic are from retirement villages with an older population.
Right, yeah.
I hate to be obnoxious, but if you use those, if you use those criteria, what about someone saying, but my restaurant will have a bus unloading 300 people in here for this event? And it also happens that my restaurant is a historic site, as we know that some of them in Gettysburg are.
I think one of the things we saw previously with the performance venues in particular was that they tend to load and unload dramatically, and that was an issue with the parking deck. Years ago, when we used to have the gate, and that was a big problem, was that one discrepancy with a theater use is that they tend to unload all at the same time. So, I could see that being as a difference.
A difference, yeah, okay.
May I add?
Yes.
So, listening to Councilmember Shindell's concern here, this may dovetail into a, one of the agenda items later on in the agenda tonight with the concept of loading and unloading zones. The concern here with Part A purpose was, we do know that there is a lack of bus parking in the borough in general. And so, this was designed to try to address that. Perhaps it should be addressed in the next agenda item on underloading and unloading zones, and the council could specifically define where on the streets to direct buses to park. Just a thought.
Okay, does anybody else share Jake's thought of removing A and not providing them at all? Does anybody share?
I share a concern that I just made about, you know, I do understand what Councilwoman Heiser is saying, but I think for major events at large venues, the person, the proprietor might make the same argument. We're all coming in at once, we're all leaving at once.
I consider it in the sense of, if you're talking about loading and unloading zone changes, as the manager discussed, that would be a solution to what this is attempting to fulfill. So, I think I'd consider it, yeah, in that way. You know, if you, if you have an area, so if you're on Baltimore Street, and we talked about the parking there with the improvements, and if you have a variety of attractions in that area, and you designate a loading/unloading zone for buses about the middle of Baltimore Street, that might serve the same purpose. It wouldn't allow the level of flexibility that exists now. It would kind of put you in whatever that zone happens to be, wherever it is.
Please keep in mind, when you establish these zones, we're not getting any revenue off of those zones. And these buses are pulling up, they come in, the bags are on because they know they're coming in at a certain time, and the bags then come off. You're getting revenue all along from those bags. Whereas, and that loading zone is going to have to be pretty big for a bus to park in there. And that's, that's not going to happen on some of the streets, you know?
When you lose the ability for anyone to park there.
Right, right, you do.
That's another problem.
And so, that's, that's kind of space that, and I think we are going to look at that, and maybe council will give some direction to start that process. But I don't see that as a substitute for what we have been doing here with the theater and the Shriver House, where, you know, their buses are their business in many cases, the Shriver House in particular. So, and we could have more of that coming. And I know the buses come into the hotels and so forth, so that's important to us, so.
It's important from a revenue standpoint.
Right. And that's the welfare of the borough as well, you know, so.
Well, I don't know. I think we had conversations about this before. It was expressed that a lot of these uses essentially go out and bag these meters a short time period before they expected arrival. They arrive, they drop, and then they unbag the meters, as I understand it. So, that's different than some of the things we've been discussing also, where things are more or less permanent.
Right, right.
You're talking about historic sites and tourist attractions, too.
Correct.
Sure, like Shriver, I shouldn't mention.
Yeah, well, I mean, there are others. I mean, we've had, you know, a number of communications from different folks who essentially, they say, we go out, we bag them, they pull in, they unload, and then they go and find their, you know, parking for a few hours in another location. We used to have a lot of those parked behind the fire department because it was just a place to get out of the way.
And I think Rebecca Brown had sent an email in about her place. She doesn't get buses a lot, but she likes the idea that she could get a bag if she does get someone who contacts her and they want to bring in a bus load. And she, her business is at a place where it's pretty limited for bus parking there. So, I'm not sensing consensus to remove this at this point. Okay, how about adding theaters to it? Do we want to put that out for public? So, it's clear that theaters are included, which would include the?
The two theaters.
Yeah, the two theaters that we have. Okay, all right.
Well, we're not going to deal with the vagueness of historic sites and tourist attractions.
As much as I don't want to jump into that, I don't know, what I think of is wall drug. No, that's what came to mind. I'm like, you can kind of determine what you think a tourist attraction is. But I can remember seeing signs for hundreds of miles, and the reality of what wall drug is or what they think that it is, that's my concern, is kind of goes back to Mr. Berger expressed, that as much as I really hesitate to define it, if it's not defined in some way, you can assert that many things are tourist attractions that I might not think are.
I think the challenge would be defining it in some way that, you know.
You're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Right, because everybody would see that different, differently.
I think it's a valid point.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, and it is difficult this way, it's difficult to draft these things. But I think the intent, and again, at the end of the day, it's going to be your intent, was to, I mean, anything where you would have a large-capacity bus or a kind of a, very temporary loading and unloading, and it wasn't necessarily to be restrictive of that, but for health, safety reasons and so forth, that they are able to have that where these large capacity would be able to reserve a space, couple spaces, whatever is necessary for that in and out, loading and unloading. And so, I'm not sure that there becomes too much of an issue with that. I mean, maybe we don't like wall drug. Thankfully, I don't think we have that situation. But if indeed we had that as a tourist attraction, maybe that would be a consideration that for health and safety concerns, you'd want a bus to be able to, or them to reserve.
What about looking for things we already have definitions for in our zoning ordinance, like theaters and museums? Because isn't that what we're actually talking about here, theaters and museums?
Theater is defined.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So, it replaces historic sites and tourist attractions with theater and.
I don't know if that's needed in the zoning ordinance, that definition.
It may not be. I'm, I'm, I think those are good suggestions.
No, I was just saying, what we already have in the zoning ordinance, we use those definitions.
Right. And as I've already said, I mean, where we have already uses that are very specifically defined, we can tie it back in. It makes it clearer, if you will.
I hate to jump into this, but it seems we're getting wrapped around the axle of trying to define establishments, which you're never going to be able, Wes, you're never going to be able to. Someone will always find a loophole.
That was my point, was, you know, remember when we had the issue with the dinner theater? You know, is it a dining establishment?
Yeah, and who really cares?
Right, right.
What I think might concentrate on the process rather than the establishment. In my mind, you know, on a vision, what happens now? Bus pulls up to the Majestic, discharges its passengers, and we create, the council creates, say, cellphone holding areas like you have at Dulles. The bus then proceeds to a cellphone holding area, and after the event, the file goes in, the bus comes back. That can apply to hotels, it can apply to, you know, any bus that pulls it in anywhere. And that way, you're narrowing down the process of how this occurs, where it occurs is immaterial.
And I think we've done that because it's for loading and unloading of passengers.
So, maybe you're messing with something you don't need to understand.
Yeah, you know, yeah. And Ted's right, you'll never define them to the point that you won't have someone who, you know, would challenge that.
Campbell will always probably get him those under the gun.
Yeah, so.
And one of the clear things I would say that we did hear was the mayor saying, get me out of the administration of parking. And you'll note that there's no longer, the mayor, the mayor is no longer mentioned in that provision.
Okay, I think we can move on to B. It might not be quite as controversial. This is reserved parking, temporary again for use in connection with the conduct of funerals, weddings, special events, and services at places of worship. Anybody have any comments about that at all? And we see that happen a lot, so. C is temporary reserve parking for performance of construction work by contractors at adjoining or nearby buildings or properties to be limited to a maximum of, and that's blank, spaces for parking of construction contractor vehicles and/or equipment on a weekly basis to correspond with the good faith estimated time of completion of a project and times of active work and construction at the proper site. Anybody have any comments about that? We need to fill in the blank. I did talk to John Lawver about this, and his suggestion was that it be limited to three spaces because he said that would accommodate a dumpster as well as probably another construction vehicle. So, that was his suggestion. Anybody have any thoughts about that?
I mean, I think when you start to get the larger things like cranes that are going to close the street, you're kind of going past that point, so. Because I was surprised last year that St. James Church was, I pulled on New York Street, and there's a crane. It looked like they had a lane closed for going up.
I had a question about the, where it says work by contractors. What if it's work that's being done by the property owner, and they have a pickup truck, and they're bringing in? Would that, do we need property, do we need by contractors in there?
I think that's a fair question.
Yeah.
I have a real issue with the fact that, you know, when you say contractors, what does that mean? And a lot of contractor, you have a GC, but then you also have subcontractors. So, are the subs allowed to park there as well? Are they allowed to use the space? Who controls that? Who polices it and for how long? And, you know, I think that it makes more sense to go with the property owner as kind of being the point person for. But I think that there needs to be, you know, not necessarily more policy instead of the ordinance, but there needs to be some sort of stranglehold put on. You can't, you can't use them for too long or, you know, you have, they're, that, going back to what John was talking about with the idea of temporary, you know, how long will this project be? And what does it mean if it goes longer or, you know, if it goes shorter? Because we had an issue where some contractors were done, and then the spaces were repurposed for something else. So, I think, you know, from a policy standpoint, we need to understand exactly what this means when it talks about the temporary reserve spaces and who's in charge. So, and maybe that's more of an issue for Richard, but, but I mean, I think we should always go with the property owner as the person, you know, the PIC for anything instead of the contractors. Because you leave it up to the contractors, and who knows who's going to show up or.
How does that work now?
So, then, when apartment is plugged for construction related to parking, there'll be specific language in regards to the individuals who are going to be on site, the cars, the license plates, so we can enforce. And then, we try to get an estimated time of how long the project is going to take. So, we rely on like an application from the contractor or the property owner, and we'll forward that way.
Richard, is it oftentimes, is it the?
Richard, is it oftentimes, is it the contractor, or is it most often the property owner, or is it a combination of both?
It's a combination of both that we've seen.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if that's really addressed here. It's more of an administration thing, I think. I don't see that in this part.
Yeah.
But I think Jake's other point is well taken, and I think it's covered with that on a weekly basis. Does that mean they have to reapply after a week? No, it doesn't. Oh, okay. What does that mean? Maybe I can't see it. On a weekly basis to correspond with the good faith estimated time of completion. So what does that mean on a weekly basis?
So I guess what it would mean is, again, if the contract, or excuse me, if the process is going to take a little bit shorter, then they just update us. That is going to be less time than needing more time to reserve a meter.
So if you only need a contractor or someone in there for a day, they have to get a weekly basis, a weekly permit? Or, no, they can get it by the day? Okay, all right, all right.
You're asking for an update each week, I think is how I read it.
Yeah, that's how I read it, too.
Yeah.
Oh, with weekly updates.
That's what you're getting behind. You know, on a weekly basis where you're at.
Yeah.
I would also add that this section is also designed to address the issue of bagged meters during weekends when construction is not occurring. So the idea here would be that under the times of active work section of this subsection, those bags would come off so that those spaces could be used at peak times for the public.
Okay. And I would agree with that. I don't think anyone disagrees with that.
Yeah, that was one of the, that was one of, in terms of drafting that, that was one of the considerations that had been raised.
So going back to John's recommendation on the three spaces, is that, from your experience, Richard, would that be reasonable?
I think it is reasonable, because again, if you have a dumpster that you want to put into two spaces, and you need a truck or a vehicle, you have an additional space.
And they're paying. If they want three, they're paying for three.
Exactly.
So, okay, all right. The other question about this is, do we want to put, when you issue a permit, do you want to put a time limit on this, that it would be only for, like, three months or six months would be the maximum, and then they'd have to come back and through the process, or is there some need to do that?
So I think the intent of it is to, again, if it takes longer than three months, they just, again, update us, and then they can renew for a longer period of time.
And you're comfortable with that?
I am.
Okay, all right. Any other questions about this one? So I think this one will stay as it's written, we'll put the three in there. Okay. And D is temporary reserved parking for moving trucks and large capacity vans for use only in the moving and relocation of personal property, equipment, furniture, and furnishings to or from an adjoining or nearby building. Any comments on that one? Okay, so that one stays. The last of the five here are, is E, temporary reserved parking for public service or contract work or use by, on behalf of a government entity, municipal authority, or public utility. And we see that happen a lot with the work the borough is doing, or GMA is doing, and this will cover that. Any questions about that wording? Okay, good. So those five, do you have any questions, Richard, about what we've talked about here?
I do not, no.
Okay.
I'm clear.
All right, so you're good with where we're going with those five. Okay, so now we come to hotels and bed and breakfast establishments. And this is set out in a different section, it's three, and parking spaces may be reserved and used by hotel and bed and breakfast establishments for the temporary use for unloading or loading purposes of arriving or departing guests at the time of check-in or departure. And then we go into the maximum number of spaces. At the prior meeting, I think it was you, Charles, you asked some questions, if you want to bring up those photos. You'd asked some questions about what do other communities do. Okay, so here are some other communities. These are, you know, fairly local.
It's Carlyle.
This is Carlyle. This is the Comfort Suites, which sits on Hanover Street in Carlyle. It is right off the square in Carlyle, and to your left of this, right of the Comfort Suites would be the courthouse that sits on the square. And as you can see, the Comfort Suites has no meters in front of it, so they don't have a bagging issue. They just don't have meters there. And there is metered parking in Carlyle. That car you see there is at a meter. I couldn't see any signage for loading or unloading, and I have a call into Carlyle, but the person who handles this wasn't there to talk to me. But this is what's done in Carlyle. And I know this was a big project for the borough to bring a quality hotel to its downtown. And so this was the result of that, Comfort Suites. And at the time this was added, and I can't remember if it's new construction, or whether it was a renovation of existing buildings.
I think it was the old Molly Pitcher Inn, or hotel.
No, it was that, well, I don't, I don't think that was the location. I think that's a different location, but I'm not sure. There is a parking deck was constructed behind this at that time, so they do have parking there. Okay, another one, yeah.
Schippenberg?
This is Schippenberg. This was a new construction. This was, was an empty vacant lot that had been destroyed as the result of a huge fire in downtown Schippenberg. I grew up between Carlyle and Schippenberg, so that's why I'm familiar with these. And this is a quality inn. Again, Schippenberg worked hard to attract many years till they attracted someone in. They also have meter, this car here is at a meter. And they have an area blocked off in front with no meters for pickup. To the left of the building, there is an alley that goes back in. So I don't think there was any parking up to that alley then, there in Schippenberg. And they do, in Schippenberg, they had a lot of parking in the back, so they did have a lot of that. So, another picture?
Lidditz.
This is Lidditz. I like to call Lidditz because it reminds me a lot of Gettysburg. It's very historic buildings downtown. They have built quite a tourist industry there over the years. This is the?
General Sutter Inn.
General Sutter Inn. It sits right in the center of their community on their, on their square. And they have this painted area. Actually, the street curves around, and the whole way around the General Sutter Inn, it is painted curb, so there's no parking there at all. At the very end of this, you see a sign, and that is a loading/unloading zone sign. So, and then there's parking meters on there. So I did call Lidditz, and yes, this is used for pickup, for drop-offs, get your luggage out. There is a handicapped ramp here, which you can't see very well on here, but they, there are no meters. She also told me they do bag meters. They bag them at holidays. I think they provide free parking during Christmas time. This, she thought, parking, their parking is handled by their police department. But this, again, the sign down at the end is the loading and unloading zone. And she thought this was the only zone of that nature that they had in the, in the community of Lidditz. It's only this one spot. And next one?
Yorktown.
This is the Yorktown Hotel. See the bicycle, Shero? It is currently shuttered. Richard tells me they're doing a major renovation project there that involves, there was a parking deck there.
There was a parking deck, and it's since been removed completely, because they have parking downtown, and they want to push more residents or more guests to the garage.
Okay, okay. But it, as you can see, the street there has been configured so that there is a pull-off there in front of the Yorktown Hotel that was used. And there's their sign. I don't think you can read that very well, but it was, it talks about the guests for luggage removal and everything there. So, so that's Yorktown. I also checked Wellsborough, because I know there's a historic hotel downtown. It's called the Penn Wells Hotel. They aren't quite as dense as we are here. They did have parking out front, but in that case, you pull in, right beside the hotel was an open area that had free parking. So they didn't need it out front.
Last one's Harrisburg.
And the last one is Harrisburg. Again, Harrisburg worked very hard to get the Hilton there. And this is at Market and Second Street. And you can see what they've done. They have a pull-on, and they have a covering over, and they actually do valet there. So you can pull off-street there to the front of the Hilton, and then, of course, there are lots of parking decks behind. I think there's one right behind the Hilton that you can go into, or they will valet your car there. So that's the experience that you see in some of the areas here. So I wanted to just throw that out so that we know what.
That's very helpful. The one difference, which you, of course, notice, and maybe this is why I couldn't find it, in the ordinance is, I did look at Carlyle and Lidditz, I didn't look at the rest of them. And it doesn't appear there, because there are no meters there.
Yes.
So maybe they don't even have to deal with it, because they've taken those meters out.
They've taken the meters out.
Whereas here in Gettysburg, we have those meters.
Right.
So I guess the solution could be, we take them out. I don't know if anyone's advocating that. But that is the big difference, that we don't have to regulate it.
Yeah.
Or are you advocating that?
Yeah, where do we, that's, that's what I was.
Then we have no revenue.
No, that's what I was thinking. They'll be taking the meters out of, in front of their buildings, in front of the hotel.
Yeah.
But which hotels?
I know.
Because we're also, I mean, because, that's what I was thinking as you're talking about this. I was like, well, it's nice that they spent, you know, time to get these hotels moved to downtown, and we're fortunate that the college, you know, took over the Gettysburg Hotel and made it what, the wonderful thing that it is. However, we also, how do we, how do we say, okay, well, they should have a pull-off like that, where we don't have meters, but then, you know, B&amp;Bs shouldn't have that right, or?
Because those are not temporary. And what we're talking about now are temporary.
Well.
Those are permanent.
They're permanent, not meters.
Right.
Yeah.
They're permanently not metered.
Right. But they're loading and unloading zone, so they're, it's temporary parking, it's temporary to be there in those, in those spaces.
So you can only be there for a certain amount of time.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But that's still a different approach than we have going in Gettysburg.
Right, right. It is a different approach in that, and I asked Lidditz, the borough manager at Lidditz, if they, if there's any kind of fee to that hotel to have that space out front, and she said, no, no, there's no fee. So they're not getting any revenue off any parking in front of that facility. And I'll ask Carlyle the same question, but we'll see. So, so that's the experience, you know, at some places in the.
They also have different tax bases, too, than we do. You know, Carlyle.
I was also going to say that.
Yes, yeah.
And Lidditz.
Yeah.
You know, Lidditz even has some light manufacturing within the confines of the borough.
Yes, yes.
But it does show that there's an expectation of, when you go to these lodging, that you're going to have a space where you can unload your stuff.
Yeah.
Which is a hotel or a bed and breakfast.
Right.
Regardless if they're getting revenue or not.
Yeah. So, so I thought that, you know, would be helpful. I don't know if there are any other examples that people know of that we can look at. I tried to look at Washington DC, but I couldn't.
I was just in Philadelphia.
Yeah.
Over the holidays, and I was in Center City, and I was visiting a relative in a hospital, and there was a hotel next door. And they had kind of the pull-off like the Hilton does, you know, so that you can pull in there to drop off luggage and drop off people, and then they either valet it for you, or you go and park it yourself, you know. And I looked at the rest of the block, and there were no other, you know, they had meters, you know, but there was no other places on the street in which you could, I mean, this is just one example.
Yeah.
You know, but they had, they had the opportunity for a pull-off.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Near Jefferson, Ms. Jefferson.
So with that, we're now at the hotels and bed and breakfast establishments. So what discussion do we want to have about whether this should be included in what we publish, we put out and publish for this ordinance?
I think you made a great point last meeting, that all the businesses in town benefit, whether it's retail, restaurants, when people stay in town, because we do compete with the township. So I think it is an expectation that for bed and breakfasts and hotels, that there's a place where they can load and unload. And I think that's good for the whole town.
I have to agree with that sentiment. I mean, when we look at this ordinance, and my understanding of how this particular provision came to be, is that the concern is essentially the competition with the surrounding townships, and you're trying to incentivize people to stay downtown, because if they stay downtown, they eat downtown, and in between, they walk the shops that are downtown. So I'd agree that that's why I believe this is here, and, you know, there's a certain wisdom to that, that it is a different use, a clearly different use.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the way that I think it just, there's a lot of benefits that the community as a whole gets from having lodging in your downtown. So, you know, I think they, these places certainly fill a need for that, so.
And we're fortunate, because we've got some top-flight lodging downtown. Some of the other photos you took, I wouldn't say they're top-of-the-line hotels, but they worked hard to get them in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're not at the level that some of our lodgings.
But back to what I was saying before about the definition of B&amp;B, what defines a B&amp;B, and how are they limited? What if we had, you know, what if, what if two or three more moved in on York Street? There would be absolutely no parking if they all had access to, you know, it's nice that they're spaced out, but they didn't, that just was happenstance. What if they happened to be on all one street? What if on my street, I got, you know, one, a couple doors down, and then they decided that they wanted the spaces out in front of my place? That would adversely affect me. And, you know, I mean, I don't think that would necessarily benefit me, since a lot of my traffic comes in from parking spaces, people had parking spaces.
And lots.
So, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, by us not really having a firm understanding of what a bed and breakfast is, we are opening that Pandora's box of, you know, well, okay, we're going to allow parking for bed and breakfast, when what business, I mean, any business could be a B&amp;B, as long as they are renting some rooms, right? I mean, I couldn't, I mean, Airbnb is a B&amp;B. We've defined it differently.
You have a definition.
But what I'm saying is, that why, why could another commercial venture not, like, do what I was saying before?
Again, that's why we tied it very specifically to your zoning definitions and so forth. Again, if you determine that you're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
We have a definition.
Perhaps, perhaps the issue to deal with Councilmember Shindell's concern here, and I think it may be a valid one, depending on how it's defined, is that to have it not to exceed number per block.
Yeah, yeah. Because, I mean, right there, that says, use of a single-family detached dwelling. I mean, my, my building was a single-family dwelling. I mean, my, my, my building was a single-family dwelling. And, I mean, I'm just saying, why, I, I, I don't know, I don't know what, what controls we have on this. Once, once we start opening this up to B&amp;Bs, what's gonna, you know, how many, how many spaces per B&amp;B, and, and what happens when that starts eating up all the, all the?
I think that says a maximum of 10 room.
10, right?
For one.
Right, yeah, right.
For, that's for one. So I mean, you know, you know, once you, what, you know, if you walked out my door, and then, you know, you walk, you walk 15 feet till you get to the first space, and then another space, you know, you're, you're walking down the street pretty far before you're even, you know, if, if, imagine if the building next to me, owned by the Rescue Mission, decided to become a hotel. I mean, that would eat up all my parking, you know?
One, one space.
Not, well, not, not, I mean.
So we do limit the number of spaces they can.
Per room.
Right, per room.
Yeah, based on the rooms.
Right. But I mean, that, that building next to me is fairly massive. And I'm not, I'm just using me as an example, just because, you know, I mean, from where I am, I don't, I, my, my business survives off of people parking, especially this time of year and coming in. So, you know, that, that massive property that's next to me is, I mean, it's, there's six rooms in the back and five in the front. If they decided at one point to sell that, and then that became a hotel, then that takes away my parking. You know, you, do you see what I mean? Like, I, I think, I think, you know, one, one of my concerns about us cutting, you know, allowing for hotel and B&amp;B parking, is that what's, what's the limit? You know, yeah, we can limit it based on rooms, but we don't have that many spaces. Well, I have, I don't know, 12 spaces on my side of the street, and there's, you know, a, a bunch of properties there that could potentially be B&amp;Bs. So what, what if they all became B&amp;Bs? Then I would have absolutely no street parking. So I, you, you see what I mean? I, I mean, I think, I think Charles is correct in saying that we need to have some sort of limit, but I don't, you know.
I think that one thing that might address your concern, and I think also, I certainly don't, you know, would not agree with the sentiment that an Airbnb is a B&amp;B. However, I think that language that could essentially put that to rest, the notion that each one of these small houses becomes a B&amp;B, is when you're talking in letter A there, 10 guestrooms or fewer, perhaps we could place a lower limit on that as well of five. Where you have to have, I, I'm not aware of any Airbnb in town that has fewer than five rooms. So perhaps that's a, an appropriate balance there. But I think that that's something we'd have to look into though, too.
Yeah.
You know, because I haven't certainly walked the inside of every bed and breakfast in town.
And remember, this is just to unload and load your luggage.
Right.
You know, a bed and breakfast cannot use this to park there all day, you know, as your parking spots for your B&amp;B. It's a, and, and they're, they're paying for these bags, so, you know, if you only have a couple rooms, is it going to really make any sense?
Right, but the benefit of having these loading and unloading, and this is what I keep saying, is to have them open, so you don't want people to park, park there. You want people to load and unload. So, I mean, yes, they're paying for them, but I mean, the, the idea is, you know, I could be sitting on a street with five B&amp;Bs on it, and I would have no parking, and the entire, all the parking spaces would be empty. Because I mean, I, I drive past some, some of the places that are renters currently, and, and there aren't cars in those spaces for those reasons, you know?
I think, I think though, we're talking about situations that probably aren't, aren't going to happen, you know?
Well, I, I didn't think we would be here right now talking about this.
But.
I think we all understood, you know, loading and unloading.
But Charles had a suggestion that you limit the number of meters that can be done on a block. Is that what you said, Charles?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is. So to Councilmember Shindell's concern there, so I think he said there's 12 parking spaces available in that, on that side of the street, so you probably want a not-to-exceed number, probably not much more than four on that block. On that, or at least on that side of the block. And then essentially would be first come, first served, depending on who, who can legally stake claims renting those for their bed and breakfast or, or hotel.
Right, but that's what, that's what I was saying. So what if, what if the property next to me decided to become a B&amp;B, and then the property next to them became a B&amp;B? Then you'd be walking down, you know, 60 feet down the block to the fifth or sixth space for parking to come into my place. You see what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, so, so even if we limit, even if we were limiting, you know, these B&amp;Bs to, like, four, like, four reserved spaces per block, that would mean, like, so, you know, like, if my front door is here, and like, you know, here's a parking space, but that's reserved, the next one's reserved, and then, you know, so you're, you're parked all the way down here to get to my front door.
Yeah, I think, I think.
My question is, just, go ahead.
The responsibility of staff to, to manage that up to the limit that would be allowable per block. So if it's only a maximum of four spaces on a block, then when that reservation request is made, staff would have to determine the best place to, to put those four spaces.
Well, my, my question, Jake, was this, the place next to you decides to become a B&amp;B, it's a sort of equivalent to an apartment under the new ordinance, or would that owner not be required to provide parking, adequate parking for his residence, or her residence?
For their guests.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's not these spaces.
Right.
Well, not, no, I, I know, I'm, I'm not talking about parking for the, for the guests. I'm talking about parking, these loading and unloading spaces. Because the, the point of having the loading and unloading spaces is that they are empty so that a car can pull up, load, unload, and then pull away, right? That's what we're all talking about. It's nice to go to.
Well, we haven't talked about that yet.
Well, but I mean, that's, that's essentially what we're saying.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, you're, you're saying that, that I'm saying that people are going to park there. I'm not talking about people parking there. I'm saying, in front of my place, there could be essentially four empty spaces that I'm not allowed to use, I'm not, my customers aren't allowed to use, because those belong to two B&amp;Bs that are next to me. Do you see what I'm saying?
I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I'm just saying, they would be empty, empty spaces. Because like, you know, I mean, that's.
Well, I, this might help, I don't know. Since the last meeting, remember, John Lover said he had a concern with the word temporary. So that's why we're even here. But since the last meeting, we received emails, and I've talked to people who own B&amp;Bs, who have said that they remove those bags when they're not thinking that they are going to have an unloading or loading situation. So we could monitor that, and we could police that, right? And, and sort of ensure that the B&amp;Bs are using them in that way, that would be strictly temporary. They're only putting them out there during loading/unloading time, and they're taking them off so other people can pay to use them. That's what I understand, the, the emails we've received from the B&amp;B community, it's something I learned in the last week, that, that is not the case, I believe, for, for the hotel, I think. I think the hotel has those meters on all day, is that right? So that is something that I want to just add to the discussion. If we are going to call this temporary, then we have to deal with the fact that those meters at the hotel are not temporary. In fact, they're, they're permanent. That are more like the hotels you showed us images, though. So Jake, to your point, even if B&amp;Bs line your block, which is not going to happen.
You don't know that.
Well.
You don't know that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, you don't know.
I don't know that, that's true. But if they did, those B&amp;B proprietors could police themselves, the borough staff could help police it, where they are not putting those out all day, every day, that they're doing it truly for loading and unloading passengers and, and patrons.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. I'm just saying that isn't the whole point of us recrafting this ordinance to say, like, okay, we need to be more specific? I mean, isn't that, isn't that the whole, our whole task here?
Because who can use meter bags?
And, and understanding the exact purpose of what loading/unloading is, and, and who should be allowed to have them, is that not the exact purpose of us being here right now?
That's right.
And, and for months, we've been talking about this, and what I'm saying is, that, you know, I don't know, I, I don't know who, who is going to be buying these buildings, you know, near me or anywhere else on, around town, and turning them into B&amp;Bs, and then utilizing this tool to say, okay, well, we can then utilize the spaces.
And that, what you're surmising could happen on any block. I, I don't, I don't see four B&amp;Bs coming into a block in the next, you know, few years. We can revisit this ordinance if it becomes a problem with the numbers that go down. And if we, if we look, if we, once we get through this, and we get to the loading and unloading zones, you know, that might solve that issue with, if a B&amp;B goes next to you. If there's a loading and unloading zone, that would take care of your needs and their needs.
Well, I'm just saying that me, as a business, the business that I run, I have real reservations about us parsing off spaces to other businesses.
Right.
Because I may be out of business by the time, you know, we, we fix this, if four businesses do move in and decide that they want, that B&amp;Bs want spaces. So what I'm saying is that, you know, we are here to craft this ordinance to be more specific, and, and I, I don't necessarily, I, I may not have that luxury as a business here in downtown Gettysburg. I think a lot of businesses have survived on parking the way it has, it is currently for a long time, and we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, you know, we, we do have people that have made significant investments in town that are drastically going to change our downtown neighborhood. And I'm just saying that there's, that there is a chance that if we start allowing for this parking, then, then it could negatively affect me, and there's no protection there for me, is what, is what I'm saying, or businesses like mine.
Can, can we look at this about, you know, everybody's needs, you know?
Well, no, I'm, I'm just saying that my, my needs are different than B&amp;B needs, and I think that that's important.
And so are the establishments beside any B&amp;Bs, so.
Right, well, and, and.
We're, we're looking at an ordinance that fits the community.
Well, and that's what I'm saying.
Right.
This doesn't, this, this seems more tailored to, how do we allow this to happen, rather than how do we disallow it from becoming an, an issue later? So that's, that's my concern. I don't, I don't.
With all due respect, and in the interest of time, and we've got more things to discuss.
Yeah.
I, I would go back to our solicitor's comment, that this is really a dynamic, you know, document, and I don't think we're going to be like, letting it languish again for another 34 years. And so I think that, you know, in news, using common sense, I think we have an opportunity to address those problems, or not problems, but, you know, concerns down the road if, if that were to happen, Jake. And so, in my opinion, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to voice the concerns of businesses that aren't B&amp;Bs or hotels that aren't included anywhere in this.
And then.
No, that's okay.
In that sense, I think I go back to, you know, the, the purpose of this portion, to me, is not to address the needs of bed and breakfast or hotels. The purpose of this segment is to address the general welfare of the community.
Right.
And it's in the interest of the general welfare of the community that our visitors stay downtown. And to me, and I really went back and forth on this, because it would have been very simple to kind of take a scorched earth approach, and really gut everything out and just leave bare bones. But the people that stay downtown, if you think about the notion of where they're going to eat and where they're going to shop, they're much more likely, I don't need statistics and Excel spreadsheets to tell me they're more likely to shop and eat in the block or two that they're staying in. I think that, you know, just living downtown, I'm more likely to shop and eat downtown than someone from outside. And that's what I'm looking at with this section. It's not necessarily about the, the benefit of these businesses involved, it's about the benefit of the general welfare of the community, and in all fairness, all of the businesses.
And, and I think the mayor raised a good point earlier, which is, if, if any of these buildings were to convert to bed and breakfast, they would still have to provide some parking, not for unloading and unloading, but actually overnight parking for their guests. And so I don't know that all of those buildings, you know, going down that street, down to, you know, Franklin, would, would convert into that. So I think we're, I, I think we're getting hung up on this, in my, my opinion, right now.
Yeah, you can get hung up on the what-ifs.
Right.
You know, forever.
Right.
And you, you need to deal with them when they, when they come up, and they.
I appreciate your point, but I think we need to.
Yeah.
And yet, something that's clearly not a what-if, is that phrase temporary use. And if we mean that, then we have to think through those who have bags that hold them permanently. And should we craft a carve-out for that? Should that be in some other ordinance? I don't know, Solicitor, if, what, what your thoughts are? Because I believe that's why John had us have this workshop.
Well, if you strike temporary use from the heading as John desired.
That's right.
Temporary use is not utilized in this Section 3 whatsoever.
Yes, it is. It's in the second sentence, but the first sentence, the second line.
Temporary use.
Temporary use, so we should strike, we'd have to strike there for the purpose of unloading and unloading. Now, you're, thank you.
It's not the temporary.
I'm really not making an argument against any, I'm just saying, let's get this right, so.
No, I, I agree, you know, you have certain circumstances where it's certainly not temporary, and I think that's John's irritation with that wording, is that make it what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think what I'm hearing from the majority here is that this provision will stay. And then, any, any suggestions for the number of spaces, the A, B, C, or D? Any, any discussion about that? It goes up to reserving up to four parking spaces. Is that what we want to do? Do those guestroom sizes make sense? Hearing no discussion, I assume they do.
I still think that we possibly should consider a minimum, if we're worried about Airbnb use. If that's a concern in Part A. But I, without really kind of taking a survey, I, I don't know specifically if five is an appropriate number or not. I know that many, it seems, have more than that, some dramatically more. Bed and breakfast, we might need to tweak a little bit.
Yeah. So. So you would think the first one would be five to 10?
Yeah, perhaps.
Would be one parking space?
So you avoid the scenario where, I mean, we're aware of Airbnbs that pop up in, what are traditionally apartments.
Yeah.
Should we at least first, at least look at the websites of the B&amp;Bs in town? Like, what if there's a B&amp;B with three? I, I don't know, I have no idea, but.
It can be, I've seen small ones like that, so I don't know what the, they tend, in our community, to be larger than that, but I don't, yeah.
Can we ask?
Yeah, yeah.
We have some.
Does anyone look less than five? Three?
Yeah.
Yeah, Raphaelian is three.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Raphaelian, which is outside a metered zone.
Yeah.
But it's still regu, right now, regulated the same way.
Is there any parking on that side of the street?
No, no. Don't you think with the gas line?
They have a driveway, too.
We have nine, but we know of them that have three.
Okay, Raphaelian, that's the only.
But no lower than three?
The only one.
Yeah.
And that's outside.
So maybe, what if you made it three instead of five?
Doesn't make a difference to me in that regard. I think it's unlikely that in.
That they would rent a bag?
I'm just, I'm kind of looking down the road. I, I agree, I'm kind of looking down the road, okay. We're combating Airbnbs and other, other ways, and how they dodge our lodging tax, so it's certainly possible that this will occur, too.
Right. So what's the consensus here as far as number one, the 10 guestrooms or fewer, or should we have a minimum? Any thoughts? Okay, then we're going to leave it the way it is? Okay. Then we get down, let's see, is, is there any other uses that anybody wants to add to these, that you can think of that we missed? Okay. Then we're going down to application fee for this. I assume there are different fees related to whether it's metered or unmetered. If it's unmetered, you're just getting a permit.
Correct.
Right, and if it's metered, you're, you're getting a bag.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So that those fees would be different in the different sections. So if, if we could skip to seven then, the next, Section B, yeah, and go down to, after the hotels and B and Bs. So, so what we've talked about would apply as well to metered zones. Is everybody agreeing to that? The wording is the same, so any, any changes that are made as a result of this discussion would apply to those as well. So that gets us to Section Seven, again, your fees. Section Eight, grant of reservation and issuance of a meter bag. The one question I had here is the, the reference to the borough issued meter bag. And I know there are bags being used that are more attractive than our bags. But, but this would not allow that to happen. You want.
Is that how you read it?
Yeah, that's how I read it. So if, if you're okay with the church, you know, putting the bags on that they had made, I think, special for their meters.
Gotcha.
You know, you might want to change that.
Okay.
To accommodate that, as long as it's approved, approved bag. Anybody else have any comments on that section? And then we come to Section Nine, unlawful use of reserved prohibited spaces. This provides consistency that the use of the space has to be for the purpose set forth in the application that was submitted. And then we have penalties. I don't think that $600 is a change. I believe that was in the existing ordinance.
Right.
Okay, any, any other issues? We're down to placement of open top refuse containers. So is there any comments about anything that we've talked about that we want to pass on to Richard? Okay. Placement of open top refuse containers in unmetered and metered parking zones. This would be your, like, your dumpsters?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or suggestions for any changes there? All right, all right, I think we're done.
With that section?
Hmm?
With that one?
With that one?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, with Chapter 15.
But, Susan, my comments about temporary use, do you think we should, you didn't acknowledge them, so I didn't know what you.
Well, I think we.
I think we should consider striking those in the appropriate segments where it's obviously not temporary.
Yeah. If we take temporary out of the headings, you have a section that is.
There are handful of locations that you, there are a few other beyond the one you identified where we'd have to strike it.
Yeah.
I just also wanted to applaud the B and Bs who do take the meters off when they are not expecting loading and unloading, but I guess there's no way to codify that in here, that they.
That's what I kind of got into, it's, I think it's difficult to expect that the staff will go down and.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that the B and Bs do that, that have communicated to us that they, you know, they know what their, when their guests are coming and they'll take those bags off, that's wonderful. I think the hotel has enough guest rooms that that's probably not practical, people are coming and going all the time with that. So as the, as it gets to be a larger establishment, it's, it's less practical to, yeah.
And, and I do think the concept of the use being for the temporary loading and unloading as opposed to, I mean, I, I would think that that's an important concept in terms of what you would.
I guess just how that's articulated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't get, don't get too hung up on the, the label and look more at the, at the detail.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we are down to Broadway Islands and Reconstruction Decisions. Chad, wake up. Yes, Chad's going to help us with this. And Charles.
You have slides to put on, overhead?
I probably do, yes.
We'll get some slides up here.
You want the construction options?
Yes.
The drawings, or do you want the decision points?
Not that, but four drawings, three options, and then one with basketball action.
All right.
I know there are two more, you want me to load them?
No, that's good, it's like that. All right, yeah, I should.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, so as you know, you've been talking about the Broadway reconstruction for a while now, this project is going to identify on the capital improvement plan. We have bond money that runs out at the end of this year that we intend on using for this project. So if we want to get it done, the time, the time is not. We need to make a decision on the islands, we need to make a decision on speed tables. And it's not only to accommodate the schedule for our schedule, but also in case for municipal authority. They've been postponing and delaying putting out their project bid until they have a decision on, on this because they can't, they, they want to replace all of their water lines in the street. So I want you to understand that the decision you're making tonight is also to help move GMA's project forward. So as you know, with, with, we heard here earlier tonight, East Broadway is different than West Broadway. The general consensus is West Broadway is going to keep the islands and East Broadway is going to stay without islands. We also got a pretty unanimous decision at all property owners' meetings for East Broadway, I want to talk about East Broadway first, to do a street diet. The existing street width is just unnecessarily wide. We can easily bump the curves in on both sides by five feet on both sides to reduce the total street width by 10 feet total and keep parking on both sides. And that still allows for 12-foot drive lanes with 7-foot parking stalls, which is equivalent to a state highway. So there's still plenty of room to move those curves in five feet. All of the property owners, for the most part, were on board with that. So all three options you're going to see here tonight show those curves being bumped in five feet. We also got a, maybe not unanimous, but a majority of the property owners that didn't want additional bump outs, addition to the five-feet street diet. They didn't want, we originally had an option to do an additional bump out here on this side and an additional bump out here, to help have a pinch point to narrow the through traffic so that it would slow down the cars. It wasn't a popular choice, so those have been eliminated from all three of the options. So what we're down to on East Broadway is an, is an option for one speed table in the middle. If you scroll down just a little bit here, this is a zoom in of this speed table in the 10 foot across the top and it has two 6-foot tapers. And things are only four inches high, so it's not like a, sure, it's not like your typical speed bump that you would have at, at like a grocery store or something like that. These speed tables are all, are much more gradual, so you can go all over them a little bit faster than you would go over a speed bump. It also allows snow plows to be able to glide over them without tearing into the, to a pump. This option, if you just went, one in the middle is at the high point of the street, so the water would shed off both directions, the opposite directions. So you could do a little curb bump out and have a nice sidewalk crosswalk across the top of it. So go to Option Two, it's a very similar concept, but with two speed tables. So now you can see two speed tables, one here and one here. And this is just because it is kind of a long street, stretch, and, and the property owners were saying that, hey, if we could do more than one, we would be interested in hearing an option like that to further slow down the traffic that's going through here. The entire intent of the speed tables is to slow down the traffic. If you just scroll down here a little bit, Wes, the only difference with these islands, since this is the high point, there will be some.
Not islands, not islands.
I'm sorry, tables, yes, 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 tables. You know about, oh, it's pretty complex.
Exactly.
So the speed tables will trap water if we went with the, with the curb bump outs like I had in the previous option. And this one will have to have a little pass-through on both sides of the island so that the rain that falls in the middle of the street here can get through those little pass-throughs. So it will make it a little bit clunky if you're, you know, doing a crosswalk right here, to walk down and then back up and then back down and back up. But we can make that so that it's ADA compliant, I'm not concerned about that, just, this one will have a little bit more maintenance component to it for our, our public works crew, who will have to push the snow off the street, but it's not a hateful amount of additional maintenance. And then the third option is one with a roundabout, I'll call it, small circle in the, in the And this one, again, at the property owners' meeting, there was about 50% of the people, you know, Patty and I were trying to do stroll of votes and count the people in the room, over 20 people in the room, each time we were getting like 10 people to vote for each one of these, then it was about 50% of the people, each, each one of these, so we had to bring them all to your attention and let you guys be the tiebreakers here. But there was an option for round, a, a small circle, if you want to scroll down a little bit, Wes, you can see, this is the zoom in of this circle in the middle. I stuck a tree on the middle of the drawing, so that can look at, look like whatever you want it to look at like. We can amend those dimensions a little bit. The intent is so that you still have a parking lane here and here on both sides, through traffic, not be able to just go straight through. You have to slow down, not to get around the, the circle to be able to get down the street. There wouldn't be any cables with this one, it would just be you had to slow down to get around that circle. So the, the, the concerns with the, the circle is that you would, you would need to be cautious about nighttime traffic. If you have a circle there, think about the circles that you know around Chambersburg and Gettysburg, here are the famous ones, and there are Addisstown, New Oxford, and we were in South Central PA, there's plenty of circles that are well lit. This one isn't necessarily well lit, so not having any lighting there is a little bit of a concern for mine. The only other ones that you could think of that aren't well lit are the really industrial like circles, you know, you go down Maryland 50, into Maryland, there's a lot of roundabouts, but they're big, industrial, lots of yellow signs and chevrons and everything, tells you which direction to go, the reflective signs, and they're not really, I heard people use the word handsome whenever they were talking about this, they wanted, if they wanted a circle in the middle, they wanted to be handsome. So I'm not thinking of those industrial, big, yellow, reflective things, so that's my biggest concern. I'm not an artist, so I'd be looking for some, some guidance from you guys if you wanted to pick this option, on how exactly you would want that to look. What would you want in the middle of this thing? You want a flagpole, you want a tree, do you want it to be a bush, what do you want?
And I, and I heard concerns expressed by some of the property owners where it would be placed, if it was placed, you know, in front of somebody's property where there was a driveway and they were coming out, then that was, you know, a challenge, because there would still be parking on both sides of, of the street.
Right.
So that would, that was a concern.
Where that circle is, there wouldn't be any parking.
Right.
Yeah, we would have to position it, believe the way that this, that this land, when you put it in the middle here, there is a park, a driveway.
Yeah, it's the Gelners and Burkeers, I think. I, I would say that.
But you could get in and out of this driveway. The way this was set up is that you could easily get in and out of this driveway.
Right. I, I, I think that what I heard at that meeting that we had with the neighbors, this is, of the three options, this is not the mo, the most popular. I, I think this had a little bit fewer.
Maybe a little less than 50.
Maybe, instead of 10 people, it might have had eight people that were saying yeah, so.
It was hard to, it was hard to count the votes because there were people.
They were almost a third, yeah, a third, yeah, right.
Would that have a curb around it? It would have to have a curb or?
Yeah, I would think it would have a curb. It could be, it could be carved up and then all concrete melt, so there's no maintenance, no grass maintenance component if you wanted to. Or it could be like a red concrete or a colored surface that, that doesn't have necessarily grass, or it could have grass and you just have to make sure somebody's going to melt it. I think the only other concern that I wanted to make, to bring to your attention is, you know, that the general concept with a small little island, this isn't the islands like we heard talking about on West Broadway. There was a, again, a unanimous, I don't know if it was unanimous, but it was at least a majority that did not want a nid on East Broadway.
Right. And they really didn't want islands at all. And this comes close to having like a little bit of an island feel.
Yeah, if you would say that now this pushes it to have an nid, then they would say, no, we don't want it.
Right.
But I feel like this is low enough maintenance that now we're splitting hair, it's just not worth it. It is significantly different in, in the scope of this little circle versus the, the size of the island in West Broadway.
Yeah. How, how wide would that island be, that, that circle, that thing, that, that little island? How wide, what would the diameter be?
We have 11-foot radius, a 22-foot diameter.
22 feet.
That's just what I'm showing here, and there's, there's no rocket science that went into this. Again, the only, the intent was so that a car that was driving this way couldn't keep going straight through without having to hit it, they'd have to go around and slow down.
Except at night.
Except at night, huh?
Except at night, when it's not.
And that will happen.
Yeah.
I have a question about the, the tables. Do they tend to be noisy when like an empty truck or someone takes an empty trailer over them, you know, are you going to get, are you going to get a lot of noise?
Not really intended, they're not, they don't bounce a vehicle around like a speed bump does.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but you might get a little bit more noise from, from them than, than just a flat street.
And there would be signage for it too, letting motors know they're coming, because part of it is, there's a lot of speed on that road. And increasingly, we're seeing a change where there are more kids coming into the neighborhood now.
Right.
And that's a concern that all the neighbors had.
Yeah.
You know, the kids run across the street to the friends across the street, and there's parked cars, so they run, they run past parked cars, and that's, that's a danger, so.
So those are the three options that I'm looking for direction on, but let me say before you, you vote on those, and I think we ought to deal with these and then we'll move to, to West Broadway, but there's two other things. Truck traffic came up a lot, and generally, commercial traffic, buses and stuff like that going through Broadway. The only thing that we plan on doing at this time is trying to do some better signage. And we know that signage is only as good as the enforcement. So there's some discussion on whether there are signs there, and we talked to some of the people that the buses that are going to and say, hey, can you keep your buses and your trucks off of our streets, try to get some voluntary compliance, that's different than an ordinance that no trucks over a certain weight or length, in which case then the police department has to enforce it. So there's some, some questions about signage, which is irregardless of these three options that could be on the table. And then the only other thing that we, we talked about that you don't see in any of these options was putting in a cul-de-sac. So it's been identified that this intersection right here, because of this dog leg here in it, is not the safest intersection.
That's true.
And one of the ideas was to put a cul-de-sac in right here, basically close this off so that anybody that wants to come into any of these properties has to come in this way. And then you do, you go around the cul-de-sac and come back out this way. It would close off this access altogether. What we originally, at the property owners' meeting, it was kind of one of those, eh, I can kind of see that idea, and it was close to 50% people that were interested. Since then, Patty can speak, speak, speak into my lap here, but we've gotten a couple other people that stepped forward and said, maybe just not yet, that's a big change, we like progressive changes, that's a pretty significant one, that's one that we'll need a significant amount of PennDOT input, this is a state road, there's a traffic, where this comes down and comes around to the traffic signal on Carlisle Street, will impact the amount of traffic that goes to that traffic signal, so we would need to have a traffic impact study. A lot would have to go into that, probably more than what we can handle to get this done this year.
With the bond money.
And I, and I actually, excuse me, it was one resident that raised the issue of a cul-de-sac. And people kind of like got on. And people kind of like got on to, you know, like Chad said, you know, kinda mulling it over. I hadn't thought about that. But I had more people talk to me afterwards that say, that said, not a good idea. They're not interested in that for, just for, first of all, convenience sake. The other thing, it's, it's not a, it's not a cul-de-sac like you think of over in your, you know, red patch or in a housing development. This is a thoroughfare and there's two PennDOT streets. And a lot of the neighbors said, I don't, I live on this street. Every time I have to go to the grocery store or I wanna go, I'm gonna have to go all, turn around and go down from a convenience standpoint. And then also, we would be directing a lot of that traffic to our neighbors on East Lincoln. I don't think they'd like, like us too much in this neighborhood. And then there was a family at the corner of Carlisle, the Murphys, and they've got that alley. And I forget the name of the alley, Chad. But they're, they've got kids and they're afraid that if, if it were closed off, you'd get people using that alley, you know, more. And we know what happens with that. Speed increases and things like that. So I, I think the cul-de-sac was really, I mean, it was one person's idea. And since then, you know, I've had four or five people say to me, I, I wouldn't vote for a cul-de-sac, so, you know.
And since then, also Susan and I have talked to Andrew Merkel at County Planning Office.
Okay.
Who is involved with ACPO and has already reached out to PennDOT to see what their input could be on maybe making this safer. So that's something that-
Right.
I, I think it's, it's pretty clear that, that we're not gonna pursue that here tonight. So I don't wanna waste a whole lot of time talking about the cul-de-sac. Let me bring it up again in the future if you guys really are interested. Any of the options, you can do the street that goes in five feet. Move forward with these options and then someday in the future, if you decide that cul-de-sac's an opportune time to, to add it, then we can have that discussion. What we're doing here doesn't change that.
Right.
Okay, so back to the tables again. The one with two tables, you mentioned the drainage issue. I guess that could become an ice issue in the winter?
No, we wouldn't let the, we would let the water through.
Okay.
With these, there, I mean, there's, there's a one foot gap on both sides here.
So you would be able to drain it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And there's not a huge amount of water that's drained from it. It's pretty, just, it's just from what's coming out of the sky and then, you know.
Okay.
From this one, it'll be from like right here in this little square area. And then on this one, it'll be just this little square area.
Okay.
There's not a huge amount of water that's flowing. But you, anything that's coming out of the sky, you'd need to let that through. It would just mean we would have to make sure we're salted. And it would be a little bit challenging to push the snow on this, on this slope. Cause we don't have any plows that can break and, and you know what I mean? And get down in that hole, so it would have to be a more of a salt thing. It would be a little bit of a, a maintenance issue component to that, but-
Okay.
There could be a potential for ice there.
It could be.
Government's obviously way more friendly to, to the maintenance.
The, just the one, the one table?
No, I'm sorry, the one table.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thoughts from council? And we, we need to give-
Can I ask Patty a question?
Yeah.
How did they feel between the two again, with the one and the two? If you had to gauge?
I think, again, the number one priority that everyone agreed with was safety is the number one priority. And I think they felt, because this is a long street, that two tables would be safer than just one table. That it would, people would go over the table and real, and anticipate and see signage and get accustomed to the fact that there's another table. So they're not gonna pick up speed going, racing down to, you know, down to old Harrisburg Road. And that was my impression, that they preferred the two tables.
I've heard, the word I've heard again and again is speed. So you're only able to travel a third of the street-
Right.
Before you have to get to a table as opposed to half.
Right. Yeah, so I think that was the preference, was the two tables. You know?
So, and that, that would be the maximum impact on the speed issue would be two instead of one, so. Any thoughts from this end of the table as to what direction, so? A cost difference?
And, and there's a resident from like, you know-
Yeah.
Who's nodding his head yes. I just wanna make sure I'm not, that I haven't imagined this, you know, with the cold medicine, but, you know.
And, and, and the two can fit into the budget for this? Having two, huh?
I'd say that's cheapish.
That's another issue.
I'd say that's cheapishly because I've been asked for numbers and we know this is at least a half a million dollar project. But because we weren't so sure with the, the different options that are on the table, we really haven't nailed down our, our costs. So it could be from 500,000 to 800,000. You know, we got a pretty big range. And we're still working through some other projects with our bond money. But I think the, the answer to the question is if we're gonna have enough money budgeted between bond money and liquid fuels, if we needed to chip into that.
Isn't it clear, this isn't a cosmetic issue between the two. This is how we can maximize stormwater management at the same time improve safety.
Right, traffic calming and, and stormwater.
And the speed tables are two issues. Out of a half a million dollar project, a $800,000 project, they will be a couple thousand dollars. I wouldn't, I wouldn't make the decision because of a couple thousand dollars to have a second. I would, I would say if anything, it's more, it's a bigger issue about the maintenance concern. There's gonna be a little bit more work with getting the snow removed from this area around those two tables versus just the one in the middle that won't have that trapping, that water issue. So there, if anything, that's, that's the concern. I wouldn't make it about the, the cost initially installed.
And the residents aren't gonna like that if we can't get the snow out of there very well.
Was that one foot, is that the travel lane or is that actually the?
One foot was just arbitrarily picked to let water through. It could be two or three or five.
The street here, it's on the same diet and it doesn't narrow what the speed table is.
Right.
So, like on either side of this, there's, there theoretically are cars.
That's right.
So you should be traveling down the portion that's not covered with snow. So they even have to cut, clear. Does that mean they necessarily have? I guess you had to for pedestrians.
Be able, cause if it was filled with snow, then the water would be trapped in the middle of the road. So you have to clear the snow out around there to let the water around. But you couldn't make it, you couldn't make it say six or seven feet because there's plenty of cars that are only six or seven feet wide and they would just swerve around the speed table. Or what most people will do is they'll only get two, two tires up on it, you know what I mean? So just get over far enough. So that's why you try to limit that space. It's why I'm picking the foot and not five.
I guess, I, I like the looks of the, the circle thing, but I think there's a lot of issues with that. The darkness, people running into it. You're, you're setting up something that's gonna get destroyed. And, you know, then we're gonna have to maintain that maybe as people chip into it. I guess I'm inclined to go with just the one table because the two kinda creates a, could create some unintended issues here with snow and ice. I, I mean, that's just my thinking on it. And, and the one table may do what we need it to do. I, I don't know.
I'm inclined to as, as well.
Yeah.
And mainly because of the distance issue.
Yeah.
I think that'll be a lot more effective.
The, what did you?
The distance, like the distance is so much smaller that you have to, to speed up.
So you're saying two tables?
Two tables, yeah.
I support the two.
The two?
And that's what, that's what the neighbors are saying.
Yeah.
I'm fine with two, I think two makes more sense.
Yeah, okay. Cause we have kids at both ends of the street. I think those families are always gonna be there. But again, if people are, you know, they think, well, I've cruised past it, I can keep going, you know.
Okay, all right.
And with parked, I have to say, because there's parking on both sides of the street, that really is a problem with young people darting out. You know, it's really become a, a concern, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it looks like we're saying two tables, the two-table design. Okay? West Broadway.
Thank you, thank, thank you.
And of course, tonight is just to give me the direction on proceeding with the design. You'll still have more than one decision to make on this. A decision to authorize the amortization for a construction bid. At that time, I'll have a good testament for you, a better budget. And then again, whenever we get to bids, you'll be taking another decision on awarding. So there'll be more than one time that you'll be making decisions on this.
Okay, all right.
So West Broadway is the islands. And I think we're down to two options. As Mike presented earlier in a public comment period, the West Broadway owners, the majority of them, wanna keep the islands and they're willing to enter into a NID, Neighborhood Improvement District, in order to maintain those things in perpetuity. So what we're down to is whether or not to keep the parking on the north side of the island. As we know, the major issue that we have is if there's parking on the north side currently. And fitting through there when there's a car parked is, is pretty tight. It's almost impossible with a snowplow, much less an emergency vehicle. And that also leads to people running into those curbs and banging up the curbs. So what we said was if we're gonna keep the parking, we should move the islands to the south a little bit. Since we're replacing all the curbs anyways, 90% of the islands are busted up in the middle. Since we're replacing the, the curbs in the island, we might as well do it in a different fashion. We all leave space for the parking if we wanna keep the parking. So the two options you got are either remove the parking altogether and keep the islands exactly where they are. I didn't need to give you an exhibit for that. Or remove the islands and shift these, I'm sorry, remove the parking and shift the islands. You can control and scroll down. Maybe you can get the whole thing, click control and scroll down. There you go. So what you have here is, is it's kind of two blocks of islands. There's from College Street to Washington Street and then Washington to Carlisle. The existing dimensions are close to 16 feet, close to, from the north drive out, close to 16 feet from the island and close to 16 feet on the south drive out. Thirds. In order to be able to have on-street parking and to have a drive lane, you need more than 16. We're proposing 19 in this. So this is a dimension up here of 19 feet. So we're proposing 19 feet on the north drive out to be able to have a seven-foot parking stall and a 12-foot drive out. And then you would make the island a little bit skinnier instead of 16 feet, it's down to 14 feet. And you would think, okay, if we're making it skinnier now, are we adding an impervious area? Which we know we can't do, that's against our MSW rule. So what we would do, instead of, if you notice the old islands, if you can picture them, they have a couple pass-throughs, pass-through, another pass-through, which is really three separate islands. And as it exists, what we're proposing here is one long island. All the property owners said we're happy with eliminating the pass-through. We don't really need them there. So we gained that impervious area back by eliminating the pass-throughs. So it's the same amount of impervious area that you're seeing on this one versus the other one, even though we made the island a little bit skinnier to be able to get some, some space. We also shifted these islands south a little bit. So this dimension on the bottom that used to be close to 16 feet is now 14 feet. Our previous, if you can remember, I gave you a, an exhibit a few months ago on this and we were suggesting to get that to 12 feet. Some of the property owners just didn't like 12 feet. That was getting pretty skinny. I know Wes was concerned about 12 feet with, you know, getting the, the fire apparatus turned in there. So they got it back to 14 feet, but that's as big as, I mean, that's as, I guess as big as we could make it and still be able to keep our impervious area the same and get our 19 feet that you need for that north drive out. So, so I guess that's where we're up to. And then Mike wanna hear from the property owners that are still in the room on, what the decision has been on the, on the parking.
Right, right. Yeah, can anybody enlighten on?
I think at this point, a lot of what Chad says is pretty accurate. People, uh, the latest is that there are a number of folks having heartburn about changing the actual movement of the islands themselves. I think people, number one, remarkably the people on the north side, most of them are saying, take the parking away, that's okay. So if you have no parking, I think people are open to skinning up the islands, maybe a foot on each side. With no parking, most people are saying you should be able to get fire trucks down there. Everything should be okay because some of us have observed that even with no parking, sometimes the streets, actually, that street doesn't have park, no one parks there. And if a FedEx truck shows up and the islands aren't, aren't a little skinnier, you still can't get by. It's only temporary until they deliver the package, but it's instructional to say, you probably have to skinny them. At least by, you know, a foot, I think is, everybody can buy that. More than that, I think you're absolutely right. The no parking is something that I guess we come to the borough about at some point. That's a, that's a separate issue about parking, which also, if you know, North Washington Street Extended, which is that little portion, I think if we're gonna address no parking on the north side, all the, all the neighborhood discussions, that little portion, portion of the street has been discussed. And fairness, I've had sidebar conversations with the Sigma Nu people about it, saying it's coming. People aren't crazy about the fact that you have both sides of the street in, in that portion. Let me think. You know, everybody about the island, absolutely no pass-throughs. We brought up our, our neighbors on Carlisle Street that use the pass-through, that come out of the alleys onto Broadway. That was the thought about keeping somewhere in there, as Chad said, that one cut through. It's not because the tourists are lost and they turn around and go back. It's because of our, our neighbors on the other one coming, coming into Broadway.
Mallie here and there's Mallie here.
Right. And so, and it just happens to be, I guess, that we have a stormwater drain that goes right under the island there. And maybe that's an opportunity to just move that area and, and, and keep the cut through. And you personally and others in that area, I mean, we don't care, but others I think do care to have at least one cut through. It happens to be there. Patty have any other thoughts?
Looking at all that cut through is common sense. You don't want people coming out, having to go up and make U-turns constantly because they're just trying to get over their homes. And I agree with what Mike said. An overwhelmingly feeling is we'll give up the parking on the north side, but in exchange, you're hoping to see the width of the islands reduced to the bare minimum. You have to deal with, you know, say with these zones, we don't want skinny islands. But keep them as close to where they're looking at, you know.
And everybody has this vision in these meetings of, you know, that the kind of concrete that's gonna be put in, the type of curb, as I'm looking at Chad, he's heard some of this. You know, it's, it's gonna be more durable than what we have now. And, you know, with this NID, people are willing to, you know, put money down now on a regular basis for the future to pay, to have a kitty and a, and a, and a reserve fund for, for that in the future. And at some point, we have to have a discussion, you know, as this goes forward with the borough about, okay, what happens if something happens to, to, to these islands? How can we partner, you know, like we know who the culprit is? If it's not the borough plow or something like that. Say, okay, how do we go after, you know, Joshmo Food Service whose truck just happened to, you know, take out six feet of curb? So it's, it's kind of those details that we're gonna have to deal with. As far as design, those are the design issues.
I think it's, it's critical at this point to decide about the parking, right? Parking or no parking? I mean, that, that's critical decision, it has to be made.
That, that changes that dimension, changes that 19-foot dimension I was telling you about. If you eliminate the parking, it's right now, it's a little less than 16 feet. It's like 15 feet, nine inches. They only wanna get one, right, way exists. If you eliminate the parking, just go one more foot, say, let's say 17 feet. That's fine. And we should be able to do that without moving the impervious area. But then again, it's really not the standard for having parking there. So it would mean that it's, for the most part, no parking means that you all trucked it. Stopped.
Right.
Well, we're not making them any wider, so it would be better than what's there now. On both sides and for emergency, yeah, ambulances, emergency vehicles, FedEx trucks, UPS. I mean, people would then have more of a chance to get by them with no parking on both sides.
Yeah, if I can speak to the parking, I contacted the deputy chief at the fire department, Brian Wassick, about- Brian Wassick, about this, and he took the ladder truck out and set it up. Sure. He saw some folks there when he was doing it. And the one thing that never occurred to me, I thought about the footprint of the vehicle, and a lot of people take pride that, you know, you can really spot where those outriggers go out, and if you really had to, you can put them in between the bumpers of the cars. What that doesn't solve is you can't open the doors on the side of the vehicle to get the equipment out. So even if you do that, we don't have roll-up doors on that vehicle, you can't get most of the things you need. So I'm absolutely in favor of eliminating the parking, particularly since the property owners are willing to do so.
Yeah, that was what I thought was going to happen, is the parking. Chris, you've been involved in this meeting, the parking was gonna...
I want to publicly applaud the neighbors over on West Broadway. It's just been great working with you.
To extend to that, I think, is that, just to say, we got together and pretty close to unanimous on this, and if you notice, we've got people who aren't in town, or we haven't been able to get a hold of them, and there really hasn't been any negative, too much negative response to this. I'd say we will continue to work with the borough as things develop, and we have changes, as Chad knows, things don't always go as you planned, and it's kind of development, but we are there and ready to continue partnering with the borough for...
I'd echo that to have a NID coming together is really quite an achievement.
Yeah.
We know how difficult that can be. We really appreciate that.
So it sounds like the direction is to eliminate the parking, and then the island has to be moved or not moved?
Yeah, I think what I'm getting is, is a bit of a hybrid between the two options here tonight, and that is that we eliminate the parking, we're going to get a little bit, we're going to get a little bit skinnier with the islands, and extend the length of them by eliminating the, to account for that impervious area, so that there's no increase in impervious area.
Okay.
So that it does allow for a little bit more space whenever there's a U-Haul, but still not necessarily enough space for a standard parking stall that would be otherwise required.
Okay. And the island is what takes care of speed in this particular section, so having the island will address that, any concerns about that, so, okay.
Chad, you mentioned that there wouldn't be any increase in impervious area. Are there any opportunities for a decrease?
The design that you see on the screen here is a wash.
It's a wash. So patching up the turnarounds, that just keeps the status quo as far as?
I don't want to promise too much of an advantage on this side. Any MS4 credits that we're going to get on this are only on East Broadway. And if you look in the pollution reduction plan, when we identified Broadway, we can only identify that on East Broadway, just because there's not enough. The islands that exist are already pretty, yeah, impervious.
I mean, except for the curb, the stuff in the middle, which is uncommon in most streets, is impervious.
And Chad, you made that clear in your initial discussions with the West Broadway folks, that MS4 probably wasn't going to be...
It's not really, because it kept coming up, and I said, take MS4 off the table whenever we're talking about the islands, that really shouldn't be a part of this component. But there was even some discussions about, you know, to make the islands depressed islands instead of humped islands, so that the water could run in there, you could do a rain guard or something like that, but then you have to re-propile the entire street, which remains removing the curbs on the north and south side, and the sidewalks on the north and south side, which then just doubles our budget.
So the sticky point was the ownership, which has been up in the air for 100 years, and the fact that they're going to take this over just allays any sort of concerns that the borough had with future maintenance. So again, I have to congratulate what these, what the neighbors are doing.
Not to Chris, but I think I want to be careful about the use and looking into our...
Oh, ownership.
About the use of the word ownership.
Yeah, right.
There's a difference between ownership and maintenance.
Right. It's maintenance. Maintenance and ownership are two different things, that's true.
So before we talk about the NID, do you have what you need from us?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. Any other questions for Chad on that, on the design? Okay, so we do have a Neighborhood Improvement District that is being formed, I guess, at this point.
Well, depending on what council does.
Right, yeah, exactly, because ultimately, we will turn back to Harry, and he was going to catch us on track with ownership and all that stuff. As we go, because I understand there has to be an actual formal vote that comes out of the borough to the homeowners, where right now, we have, I showed you, we have informal pieces of paper saying, okay, I'm for this, but that's not a formal vote that has to be originated.
Right, right.
Whatever documentation of what a NID is that Harry, it really has to start with you folks.
So I think what we were talking about was having something from the residents, the neighbors, asking us to do that.
That would be...
So that would be Mike's pieces of paper? Is that what he...
Well, I mean, there would be a petition.
A petition, okay.
A petition. There, I mean, there are two ways that a Neighborhood Improvement District can be initiated. One is by the petition of the property owners, which I would think would be the appropriate way that this one would be initiated. And then there's a formal process. Not only will there be a requirement of a petition, but there will be the requirement of a development of a Neighborhood Improvement District Plan. That plan will require that there will be a map showing the boundaries by street. The plan will have the name of the proposed district, the detailed description of the service areas, the list of all properties to be assessed, the list of proposed improvements within the NID, and the estimated cost, proposed budget for the first fiscal year, program services, maintenance, operation, capital expenditures, all of those items, proposed revenue sources for financing, all proposed improvements, estimated time for implementation. So there is a sophisticated plan that has to be developed, because essentially, that has to be provided to the, all of the property owners, so that they can have an, I mean, essentially, a straw poll has been taken. But at the juncture, council will have to conduct a public hearing, the plan will have to be presented, you'll get comment and so forth. And then there will be a 45-day period within which property owners, they don't vote in favor of the NID, they have the ability to vote against the creation of the Neighborhood Improvement District. And there is a, I mean, there would be a requirement that it would be 40% or more of the properties.
Have to vote against.
Yeah, so there's a procedure.
Okay. So what do we need as a borough to start that procedure on our end?
Well...
What do we need?
We need, I think what we need is the petition from a formal, a formal petition, and also the creation of the Neighborhood Improvement District Plan.
So I guess some of the residents should meet with you and manager Gable offline and get the paperwork to proceed with this. Nice case.
Right. I don't know whether you folks are going to engage legal counsel to help you put things together to present...
We're discussing that.
Yeah.
Well, if the borough is willing to...
Well, there's kind of, there's two sides, and so forth, and I'm not talking about an adversarial sort of situation and so forth, but essentially, I mean, your Neighborhood Improvement District, if created, is going to have an existence separate and apart from the...
It's going to be a legal body.
Yeah, exactly. You're going to...
Absolutely.
With very, I mean, with the power of assessment, which is a very great power to have, so...
President Knauk will give you one more piece of advice with regards to the NID, the timing of the approval of the NID versus, and I told you, you're going to be giving me a couple of more decisions. One is the authorization to advertise for construction bids, and then the authorization to award a construction contract. Certainly, when you award a construction contract, there's not a whole lot of turning back at that point. So we're going to be replacing the islands with or without the NID. So you might want to keep that in mind. It seems like there's some good faith here that this thing's moving forward, but there is a lot of work to get done, both on my end for getting the contract out, but also on the property owner's side, to get this NID thing together, but it seems to me like we want to have the NID in place, you know, and if Charles is here, he might, I'm not sure if he's still on the phone or not, but he might suggest to make sure we get that NID in place. So I just wanted to keep that in mind as you're making the decisions.
Charles?
I'm here, but I couldn't really hear what he said.
Oh, okay. Chad was talking about the timing of the NID in relation to, you know, putting out bids and so forth. So I think really, it would probably be nice to have paperwork for the NID before, you know, bids are put out. Would you, what was your thinking about that, the timing?
Did council receive a petition tonight?
No.
Okay. That would be helpful.
Okay.
And the development of a plan, the Neighborhood Improvement District Plan is absolutely critical for that, to be moving forward.
Yeah, because we'd need the plan, that would be what would be presented for the public hearing.
Yeah, because I don't think we can really move forward without the, without the development of the, of the plan.
Right, right, so it would make sense to authorize me to move forward with the plan, but sometime, either the advertisement for the bids or the authorization for the, to award the contract, maybe that's where you hold up until the NID is established. It's one of those two, two steps.
Okay. Okay, so we'll be hearing more from West Broadway?
Yes.
In the near future? Okay, good.
And I'll be talking to, maybe I'll call Eric.
Yeah.
As far as what a petition is versus what we have.
Okay.
Is we have signed approvals from people going forward, but I just...
Where are you anticipating putting up the bid?
Well, work backwards. We're anticipating that our construction isn't going to happen until after July 4th. We're hoping that GMA will have time with the decision here tonight, and once I get these curves aligned, to move forward and get their construction done before the July 4th, so that they're out of our way, we can come in right after. So moving back from July, we would need to award at very latest in June to move forward with construction in July. So that means we would have to advertise in May.
So let me give you the worst-case scenario. The worst-case scenario is that GMA starts on East Broadway, continues down East Broadway, assuming that they'll start there. And then, for some reason, there's a problem on West Broadway. We can't get our act together to do the NID. Will GMA stop there?
They're still going to, they're still...
They're going to go across Carlisle Street, they're going to keep rolling, and they're going to work with the islands as they are and deal with things as they are.
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to...
Yeah, their work will continue, so, okay. All right, any other questions about this? Charles, do you have any questions there?
Nope.
Okay, all right. And you have what you need?
I do, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, we have two more items, and Richard, parking department's going to give us, just give us a little update on these proposals.
Do we want to, it's 10:30, do we want to hold this to our next workshop? Do we need to do this now?
I can make it brief.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be long, yeah.
So for the loading and unloading zone proposal that I wanted to put before council was very short-term meters that we had prior conversation. The maximum time limit would be about 30 minutes per meter. We will be able to enforce with our technology in the parking department, but again, the purpose would be strictly for people who were doing carryout and/or quick loading and unloading. And we actually looked at a couple of locations, the most recent one, sorry, I forget, I always speak softly, I'm sorry. So I looked at the most recent example, and I'll actually even use Starbucks where they had their signage out. But again, it would not necessarily be relegated to a business, but it would be borough who enforces it, and it's borough who decides where these meters or these locations would be. Ideally, they would be in the beginning of the block, or they could be at the end of the block. My idea was, again, to have it as a pilot program for simply six months. We would monitor the progress of it, and then if it's something that we want to continue to institute, or we want to modify, we could start to tweak, and then, again, bring it back to council to make a final decision on how we want to move.
So I think our question in council, does anyone object to Richard pursuing this proposal and gathering more information for us, and would come back with more details about how this might be put out there?
These are meters loading, 30 minutes or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We already have something like this on the square, it's just not...
Yeah, yeah, we did, yeah. All right, no objections?
Thank you.
And you can move ahead. Any other one?
So my understanding with the LPP, which is the local privilege permit, was that it would be something for the service workers in the community who have limited income and need places to park. Because we have underutilized parking available in the long-term meter spaces, we would, again, permit that as LPP zones, and so it would be on a permit basis of $35 a month. We would be able to monitor program, and they would apply, but they would have to have documentation to actually work in the borough. And so with that being said, we have some decals that we've already put together. We also have, actually have language we put together as far as the application, and it's just a matter of moving forward with the decision.
Can you give an example, or...
An example?
Mm-hmm.
So it's similar to the RPP program.
Yeah.
But again, it would be for individuals who are working in the borough.
Okay.
Would they be residents also, is that a requirement?
Yes.
I thought so, yeah. This is a sticky topic, came up a few years ago, about how much, you know, you want to permit and encourage people that live outside because of the tax rate discrepancy.
But I don't want to relegate it simply to just residents, because there are individuals who do work in the borough, are on limited income, and need parking. So that's something to take into consideration.
And these would be designated meters?
In the long-term parking area.
Yeah, the meters that are underutilized at the current time.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Are we okay with Richard pursuing this proposal as well, and coming back to us with more details?
Sure.
Okay.
I have some hesitation about non-residents, but I think it's fine that we look at it and...
Yeah, we can look at it and talk about...
Just because of, yeah, residents that, that rent pay disproportionately more rent because of the tax rate.
This conversation came up in late 2017 when we were passing the 2018 budget, and the conversation at that time was to be deferential to those individuals specifically living in the borough.
And that might be a good way to start the program, to see, you know, how it works. Yeah, and then take a look at it, so. Okay, so we're going to move ahead with that. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Charles, is there anything before we go to the final public comment that we missed or that you want to bring up?
I think we covered everything in quite good detail tonight.
Okay, good. All right, then, that brings us, is there anything from any of the members here? Okay, then that brings us to our final public comment period. Is there anybody who would like to give comment at this time? Hearing none, we are going to, and nothing more from the members, we're going to adjourn to an executive session. Thank you for coming.